Welcome to the October 7th Palm Beach County Board of County Commissioners Meeting. Can we get a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Baxter.
Here.
Commissioner Flores.
President.
Mayor Marino.
Here.
Commissioner Powell.
Here.
Commissioner Sacks.
Here.
Commissioner Wise.
Here.
And Commissioner Woodward.
Here.
Thank you.
I've asked Commissioner Sacks to lead us in the invocation and the pledge.
Eternal God, in these troubled times when anxiety runs high and frustration runs deep, in the face of political transitions and an economy writhing in disarray, we are grateful for reminders of your presence with us today, your love for us and your grace towards us. Teach, when we think that we do not have enough of this, that, or the other, to be more grateful for what we do have than fearful about what we don't, and more appreciative of what we have left than embittered over what we have lost. Show us, oh God, where we need to be more swift to bless than to belittle, more quick to love than to loathe, and in this season of Thanksgiving, more generous in our offered compassion to the forgotten and forlorn. Make our lives the answers to the very prayers that we offer in your most holy name. Amen.
Amen.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, a justly repented republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, do we have any additions, deletions, modifications, or substitutions?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On page 14, item 3E3 is deleted. On page 21, 3H3 is an add-on. On page 23, 3J2 is a revised motion title and summary. On page 46, 3BB2 is an add-on. On page 49, 3DD1 is deleted. On page 50, 41, page 40, item 41 is revised. On page 55, 6A1 is a revised motion and title. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. May I get a motion for the adoption?
So moved.
I have a motion from the Vice Mayor, second from Commissioner Wise. All in favor, all opposed? That motion carries 7-0. We are now on to the consent agenda. Would anybody like to pull anything from consent? Okay. We have some cards on the consent agenda, and if you don't...
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I would like to pull some items from consent.
Okay. Can you tell us which those are, please?
Under C, Engineering and Public Works, page 10, 3C1. Under Q, page 35, 3Q2. Under X, cancel that. Those are the items at this point that I'd like to pull, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. We have cards on items other than those that were called? Okay. We have several cards on consent. What we're going to do for those in the room, because we have a lot of proclamations, if you all don't mind, we will read the cards. You will get your three minutes. Hopefully, you can make it in less than three. When we approve the consent agenda, normally, we will hear the items right after that, but we will take up the proclamations and then hear the items if that it would be okay with the rest of the board.
Fine.
Yep.
Good idea.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, why don't you call the cards?
Okay, we have five cards. On 3AA4, we have Leandre Camel, Carmen Sita Mitchell, Tekeisha Staffer. On... Should we just take that item first?
Just those for now. Thank you.
Oh, wait a second. That says six. Tekeisha Staffer, I think I might have six.
We'll take the ones you called.
We'll just take the first two, Leandre Camel and Carmen Sita Mitchell. Is there a six?
Ms. Mitchell?
I use. All right, well, I'll take it. Good morning, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Commissioners. I just rise to say thank you for the support and thank you for asking this little country boy from Belle Glade to serve on the Palm Tran Service Board. So I just wanted to know I will be a voice for the residents, but not only the residents of the western region, but also for Palm Beach County as I serve in that role. So I just wanted to rise and say thank you for accepting and allowing me to serve.
Okay. Good morning, Mayor Marino, Vice Mayor Baxter, Commissioners and County Administrator. I'm here on behalf of the Palm Tran Service Board, first and foremost, to thank you, all of you, but especially to Commissioner Sacks and Commissioner Woodward for my renomination to the board, having served on it since 2019 and been chair since pretty much that time. I'm also speaking on behalf of Mr. Acevedo. He thanks Mr. Flores for the nomination, but couldn't be here because he's in training, and the number of the other board members that couldn't be here, Board Member Hallison Mishler, our elected official, Kishamba Miller Anderson, and I believe Jim Gibbs. So, on behalf of everyone, we wish to thank you. We serve at your behest, and it's been a journey all these years, but again, we thank Palm Tran for the service, but we thank our Commissioners for providing the funding and everything that we need to run the superior service, providing access to opportunity for all in a matter that is safe, efficient, and courteous. And last but not least, even though the nomination has not been ratified, we welcome our two newest board members, Mr. Camel and Ms. Saufold. Thank you as always. Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Tekeisha Saufold, and I would like to thank everyone in their respective places for the opportunity to continue to serve in our community on the behalf of the Palm Tran Service Board, and to thank you all for our extended service, our holiday services that a lot of us enjoy, to extend our quality of life, and just to bring aware and attention to this month being Blind Equality Month, and how that represents many of us in this community, as well as National Employment Disability Awareness Month, in addition to White Cain Safety Day. So just bringing those awareness and those observances to your attention throughout the month of October. So again, thank you all for this opportunity to continue to serve, and to thank my executive director for also believing in me on the behalf of the Lighthouse for the Blind of the Palm Beaches. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, and on 3BB1, we have Andrew Duffel, and 3BB2, Kathy Benton.
Waiving in support? We like that. You're more than welcome, but you can wave in support, too.
Just a quick, good morning, Commissioners. My name's Kathy Benson. I'm the Grants Manager at Girl Scouts Southeast Florida. We just want to thank you and the Youth Service Department for the support and bringing these essential leadership development programs to underserved girls.
No, we have non-speaking cards that will be filed.
Thank you. So we had a motion and a second on the consent with the two items polled. All in favor?
Hi.
All opposed? See, that motion carries 7-0.
Mayor, may I be recognized?
Sure.
Can you restate the maker and the seconder for the part of the...
The maker was the Vice Mayor, the second was Commissioner Wise. Thank you. All right, we are going to, we will come back to the two items that we polled, but we have so many folks in the audience today, and we have about 14 proclamations, so we're going to go ahead and get started with those. But before we do the proclamations, Alicia, you want to walk Strudels around? For those of you that are allergic to puppies, I apologize in advance, but we've been trying to help Animal Care and Control and get their puppy, their dogs adopted. We've had two senior dogs, and this just happens to be a 10-month-old puppy named Strudels, and all I can say is this dog really wants to cuddle and kiss, because I just got slobbered all over my face. But I promise, Mom, before I come home, I'll wash my face. But just a shout out to our wonderful Animal Care and Control, who's doing a magnificent job of housing puppies, cats, we have a horse right now, in our community to keep them safe and healthy and try to get them adopted into the rest of the community. So if you are so inclined at home and you're seeing this cute puppy, are you, do you have a picture of Strudels? There you go. Anybody who wants to adopt Strudels, Strudels will be in my office all day today, just let us know. We are doing, we are trying to take the puppies out for a day, out of the kennel, and bring them up here. I know that we've had a lot of other departments adopting puppies for a day or a dog for a day, so anything we can do to help them get a forever home, we thank you in advance for that.
Madam Mayor, I think Alicia might be taking this one.
I know. They've bonded. Alicia, she goes to Animal Care and Control in the morning, picks the dog up, and he just, like, jumped all over her. So, hey, Alicia, you know you could have a second dog. I don't know. I don't know if Monty, her first dog, would want to share, but anyway, thank you very much for indulging me with this. It's important for our furry friends to find a forever home. With that, we have lots of proclamations, and what I'd like to do is I'm going to reorder just two. I think Vice Mayor Baxter asked if she could have the proclamation for Breast Cancer Awareness Month?
Yes.
So, why don't you go ahead and get started? And Commissioner Sacks, you will follow with the National Disability Employment Awareness Month.
Good morning, everyone. It is my honor to invite Nancy Brinker to join me. Good morning. And if we have any breast cancer, I cannot speak this morning, everyone, survivors in the room, would you please also join us? And anyone else that would like to help support the cause? Today, we are honoring Nancy G. Brinker during Breast Cancer Awareness Month 2025. Whereas October is recognized annually as Breast Cancer Awareness Month, a time to raise awareness about the impact of breast cancer, to encourage education, prevention, and early detection, and to honor those who have been affected by the disease. Whereas breast cancer remains the most commonly diagnosed cancer among women worldwide and the second-leading cause of cancer death among women in the United States. Whereas Nancy G. Brinker, a distinguished Palm Beach County resident, has dedicated her life to advancing the fight against cancer in memory of her beloved sister Susan G. Coleman, who courageously battled breast cancer. And whereas Ambassador Nancy G. Brinker, founder of Susan G. Coleman for the Cure and the Promise Fund of Florida, have played a vital role in expanding awareness, access to care, and lifesaving services both locally and globally. Whereas by coming together as a community during Breast Cancer Awareness Month, we recommit to supporting those recently in treatment, celebrating survivors, and continuing the fight to find a cure while recognizing the impacts Nancy G. Brinker has made to our nation. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Palm Beach County, Florida, assembled in regular session on this seventh day of October 2025, that Palm Beach County is hereby honoring Nancy G. Brinker.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And I'm very moved by that, and I'm honored to be here today and deeply grateful to Vice Mayor Sarah Baxter and the Board of County Commissioners and County Administrator Verdinia Baker for this meaningful recognition during Breast Cancer Awareness Month. It was almost 50 years ago, I know that sounds like whoever in it was, when I made a solemn promise to my beloved sister Susan G. Coleman as she was dying of breast cancer. I promised her that I would dedicate my life, as she asked me to, and this disease for all women. That promise became the foundation for Susan G. Coleman Organization, and it continues today through the Promise Fund, an initiative born right here in Palm Beach County, dedicated to increasing survivorship through access to care, education, and compassion. At the Promise Fund, we're building on everything we've learned, connecting women to screenings through a model that moves barriers, reduces fear, and brings healthcare directly into the communities that need it most to avoid late-stage disease, and to predict and to prevent this death from this disease by discovering it very early. Our navigators, partners, and clinics are the heart of this work, ensuring that every woman, regardless of where she lives or what she earns, can access timely breast and cervical cancer screenings, because we know that early detection saves lives. The Promise Fund to date has screened 19,041 women with 266 cancers detected and navigated through treatment, and we believe that these patients are also going to live long and fruitful lives. I believe and often say that we must equalize access to breast and cervical cancer screenings for all women. We are not only in this counting alone, but we are going to be in several counties in Florida, please, God. We believe right here, however, we have over 100,000 women who remain uninsured, underinsured, or in some way cannot have any care, or don't, haven't found it yet, but we are here at the Promise Fund. Yet through collaboration and compassion, we are changing that story. So together with leaders like you and partners across healthcare, business philanthropy, we are creating a model that can be replicated nationwide, and it's, we're very proud to think that it was started here in Palm Beach County. To me, this proclamation is truly a personal honor. It's a reflection of the Promise Fund, which was started seven years ago. It shows what we can achieve when we unite purpose with action. It affirms that when we come together as a community, we can save lives, restore dignity, and offer hope, and offer a model to other places in our country who need to be embracing community health like we are in Palm Beach County. Thank you for standing with us and for continuing this fight, not just in October, but every day of the year. So I am deeply grateful to all of you, and I hope that you will come by and see us at the Promise Fund and understand even better what we do for keeping the people who live in our, the women who live in our county, opportunities to be healthy and to be, if they are going to be diagnosed with an early, early-stage disease, will survive it. I am a breast cancer survivor as well, and it is, takes a lot of effort and a lot of time and so forth, but we're making the journey simpler, better, and more successful. The survival rate is going up, and it's just because of programs. And I want to thank and ask my Promise Fund colleagues who are here today to stand up for just a minute and be recognized. Thank you for all you do. Thank you all very much.
We're going to take photos together. I was going to ask if Administrator Bruzzo would please join us, seeing as how he's new. I think this is a good one for him to come help celebrate.
And I wonder if I could have come forward Thomas Maraca, a Maraca builders, an incoming board chair, this is going to be for the hablation center, and Moricia Benitez, funder of the Carl DeSantis Foundation, and of course, the CEO, Sherri Henry, Daniel Owen, CFO, Pamela Brown, Miguel San Miguel, Anika Wally, Beth Ortiz, Cristopolo Alvarez, Katie Rowe, Victor Bowers, and Hidia Mark. If you could all come forward and accept this proclamation. How are you? Tell me again.
Magda Marin and Africa Moody.
Ren and?
Africa Moody.
And Africa Moody. Come on up. We always have space for everybody. This is good. Everybody. Okay. Now here comes the good part. We're going to declare October 2025 as HAB Center Month. Whereas the Hablation Center for the Handicap, now proudly known as HAB Center Boca Raton, was established in 1978 through the vision and efforts of a group of dedicated Boca Raton civic leaders and parents determined to create a safe, supportive, and empowering environment for adults with developmental disabilities. And whereas in October 2025, you have celebrated your 47th anniversary. Whereas the HAB Center was founded as a nonprofit community initiative with the mission of helping adults with developmental disabilities achieve personal independence. There's nothing more important to any of us than to have a job, to do something useful, and that's exactly what the HAB Center does for those who have developmental differences. So for more than four decades, the HAB Center has remained steadfast in its mission to equip adults with developmental differences and mental health challenges with the skills, confidence, and support to live meaningful and productive lives. Whereas the achievements of the HAB Center are made possible through the unwavering support of its dedicated employees, university interns, community volunteers, generous donors, and collaborating organizations who help amplify your mission. So therefore, the Board of County Commissioners of Palm Beach County, we value the importance of empowering individuals with developmental differences and mental health challenges and recognize your outstanding contributions made by the HAB Center to improve lives and promote independence. So it is proclaimed by us, the Board of County Commissioners, assembled in regular session on the seventh day of October, as the entire month of October 2025 in Palm Beach County, Florida, is hereby proclaimed HAB Center Month.
Good morning. Thank you, Commissioner Sacks, for this proclamation nomination. Thank you to the entire Board of County Commissioners for your unwavering and dedicated support, and to all of the county staff, we appreciate you. I am here, Sherri Henry, as the CEO of HAB Center Boca Raton, and I have the privilege of leading this organization. Behind me, I really want to recognize who's here today. We've got our Board of Directors, Thomas Maraca, we have Don, Dan Owen, CFO, Cristopolo, Katie, Hidea, and Victor, are individuals that are in our program at the HAB Center. We've got Miguel San Miguel, we've got Betty Ortiz, Anika Wally, Magda Marin, Africa Moody, Freddie Farage, our Board of Director, and am I missing anybody? Pam Brown, or Director of Social Services, and Steve Pollard, who has been on our board for over 15 years. We are so honored to serve this population of individuals with developmental differences, and it being Disability Employment Awareness Month, HAB Center is so dedicated to employing this population and to giving them that purpose and independence that Commissioner Sacks talked about. We employ over 100 individuals at our center every year, and in the community, Magda and Africa's team have employed 44 individuals in competitive integrated employment. So that's over 144 people that we employ every single year. Our individuals are 60% from Palm Beach County and 40% from Broward County, and that really speaks to the kind of program that we offer. The HAB Center was created because there were no services in the county for this population, and today we have individuals traveling over 100 miles to come to Palm Beach County for those same services. So that really speaks to the quality of the work that we do and the dedicated team that we have. We offer mental health counseling, we offer vocational training. I'm doing a plug, shamefully. We have a plant nursery where our individuals work, and we would love for you guys to come out and support our plant nursery. And in addition to that, we have a manufacturing center, which is an ISO 9001 Registered Manufacturing Center. So we have our individuals learning marketable skills every single day to be able to gain that independence, to improve their self-worth, to improve their mental health, to improve their physical ability. We also include recreation programs, and very recently, we launched a honeybee program. So now we, our individuals are learning about creating a microbees, microbusiness, and the importance of bees in the ecosystem, and really, it goes back to the empowerment and the purpose that we provide for this population. I want to say thank you for your support, for your ongoing continued support, and thank you to the entire team or our Board of Directors that are here with me today. Thank you.
Joelle, before you get started, I'd like to apologize to Commissioner Flores. I was unaware that he had put in a request to go first today, kicking off this day for breast cancer awareness. So Commissioner Flores, I deeply apologize, I was not aware, but I really want you to take this with grace and kindness, and I apologize.
Good morning, everyone. So we're actually now doing the actual Breast Cancer Awareness Month proclamation, so I'd like to invite the members of Found Care, CEO Chris Irisari, and Marcia Young, the Chief of...
Katie, Hidia, and Victor, are individuals that are in our program at the HAB Center. We've got Miguel San Miguel, we've got Betty Ortiz, Anika Wally, Magda Marin, Africa Moody, Freddie Farage, our Board of Director, and am I missing anybody? Pam Brown, or Director of Social Services, and Steve Pollard, who has been on our board for over 15 years. We are so honored to serve this population of individuals with developmental differences. And it being Disability Employment Awareness Month, HAB Center is so dedicated to employing this population and to giving them that purpose and independence that Commissioner Sacks talked about. We employ over 100 individuals at our center every year. And in the community, Magda and Africa's team have employed 44 individuals in competitive integrated employment. So that's over 144 people that we employ every single year. Our individuals are 60% from Palm Beach County and 40% from Broward County. And that really speaks to the kind of program that we offer. The HAB Center was created because there were no services in the county for this population. And today, we have individuals traveling over 100 miles to come to Palm Beach County for those same services. So that really speaks to the quality of the work that we do and the dedicated team that we have. We offer mental health counseling, we offer vocational training. I'm doing a plug shamefully. We have a plant nursery where our individuals work, and we would love for you guys to come out and support our plant nursery. And in addition to that, we have a manufacturing center, which is an ISO 9001 Registered Manufacturing Center. So we have our individuals learning marketable skills every single day to be able to gain that independence, to improve their self-worth, to improve their mental health, to improve their physical ability. We also include recreation programs, and very recently, we launched a honeybee program. So now, we, our individuals are learning about creating a micro bees, micro business, and the importance of bees in the ecosystem. And really, it goes back to the empowerment and the purpose that we provide for this population. I want to say thank you for your support, for your ongoing continued support, and thank you to the entire team or our Board of Directors that are here with me today. Thank you.
Joelle, before you get started, I'd like to apologize to Commissioner Flores. I was unaware that he had put in a request to go first today, kicking off this day for breast cancer awareness. So Commissioner Flores, I deeply apologize, I was not aware, but I really want you to take this with grace and kindness, and I apologize.
Good morning, everyone. So we're actually now doing the actual Breast Cancer Awareness Month proclamation. So I'd like to invite the members of Found Care, CEO Chris Irisari, and Marcia Young, the Chief of, Chief Operating Officer, and any survivors and supporters to come up and receive the proclamation. So declaring October 2025 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month, whereas in 2025, an estimated 316,950 women and 280 men will be diagnosed with breast cancer in the United States. And whereas every two minutes, someone is diagnosed with breast cancer, making this disease the most frequently reported cancer in the United States. And whereas in the U.S., an estimated 42,680 people will die from breast cancer this year, including more than 200 residents of Palm Beach County. And whereas through research and advocacy, significant advances have been made in the fight against breast cancer, including five-year relative survival rates for localized breast cancer increasing from 74 to 99%. And whereas nearly 20% of women in Palm Beach County will not receive a mammogram this year due to the lack of income, insurance coverage, or accessibility to Medicare. And whereas Found Care has continued to expand its services to provide residents in Palm Beach County with access to free and discounted mammography screenings to uninsured women and limited financial resources. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Palm Beach County, Florida, assembled on this regular session on the seventh day of October 2025, that October 2025 in Palm Beach County is hereby proclaimed Breast Cancer Awareness Month.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Marcia Young, and I'm the Chief Operating Officer at Found Care. On behalf of Found Care and our CEO Chris Irisari in his absence, I want to extend our heartfelt gratitude to the Board of County Commissioners of Palm Beach County, and especially Commissioner Joel Florials, and everyone here today for honoring us with this proclamation in recognition of breast cancer awareness. This acknowledgement is deeply meaningful, not only for our organization, but also for the countless individuals and families in our community who are impacted by breast cancer every day. At Found Care, we are committed to providing accessible, compassionate, and comprehensive healthcare to all, regardless of the ability to pay. Our work in breast cancer awareness prevention and support in collaboration with Promise Fund and its founder, Ms. Nancy Brinker, is guided by a simple but powerful mission to ensure that no one faces this journey alone. This proclamation shines a light on the importance of early detection, education, and access to care. It is also a reminder that when communities come together, when city leaders, healthcare providers, and residents unite, we can create real and lasting change. To the Board of County Commissioners, thank you for amplifying this message and standing alongside us in the fight against breast cancer. We accept this honor with humility, gratitude, and renewed determination to continue serving those who need us most. Together, we can spread hope, save lives, and build a healthy future for all. Thank you.
Moving right along, we're going to give a presentation now for National Employment Disability Awareness Month. And if I could have the attendees, Rose Lee Archer MS, President of the Archer Disability Foundation, and producer and host of The Rose Lee Show, and Pat Robert Archer, Director of the Archer Disability Foundation. They could come forward. Right over here. And I know who this is.
He's our star.
He is the star. He is.
Yes.
We'll have to get him in a picture.
Thank you, Commissioner Sacks.
That's okay. I'm going to read it now, and then Mom's going to say something. All right, we are declaring October 2025 as National Disability Employment Awareness Month. As I said before, there's nothing more empowering than to have a job. Everybody should at least have the opportunity to produce something, to make something. And this is so important for those who have special abilities, and this is what you have done and been a, really, an empowering force behind. This is the 80th anniversary of National Disability Employment Awareness Month, has honored the contributions of people with physical disabilities in our American workforce since 1945, and in 1988 added to include people with mental health conditions. So the theme for 2025 is celebrating the value and talent. And whereas the Archer Disability Foundation celebrates 25 years of disability mentoring, outreach programs created for exceptional student education, students with disabilities in our school district who are transitioning out of high school, mentoring opportunities, promote career exploration to advance skill building for securing employment in our community, graduating ESE students as the most underutilized labor pool who need help to integrate into the community to achieve independent living skills. Whereas disability mentoring is a valuable recruiting tool for businesses, government agencies, and organizations to create inclusion in the workplace by helping students and job seekers with disabilities explore possible career paths, build confidence in their employability, obtain firsthand job experience, and develop lasting mentor relationships. Whereas a Palm Beach County School District serves, you ready for this? 38,000 students identified as eligible for ESE from birth through age 22, who may have physical cognitive mental or hidden disabilities that substantially limit one or more major life activities. One of those 38,000 students was my little girl Jessica. So after graduating from Boca High School at 22, she had no place to go and nothing to do. But it is through the mentorship of programs like the HAB Center where she worked, and now in the Archer Program, to be able to produce productive lives in our community. So Floridians with disabilities represent an untapped talent source for employers. Listen up. Contact these folks later, you've got a position open for someone who will work like you have never seen anybody work before. And these individuals should be offered opportunities to create productive, independent lives through social, academic, and employment environments. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Palm Beach County, Florida, assembled in regular session the seventh day of October 2025, as the entire month of October 2025 in Palm Beach County is hereby proclaimed, and I'm doing this with the Vice Mayor Sarah Baxter and myself, National Disability Employment Awareness Month. Thank you very much. And now you have a moment.
Thank you, Commissioner Sacks. We've been knowing each other for a long time. And when I say that Archer Disability Foundation is 25 years old, I never thought I would get this old. But I am, and I'm proud because of the work that I've done as a volunteer, because our work at Archer Disability Foundation doesn't go out and get grants to keep this going. We get a small grant, which I, I'm not supposed to say it helps cover my insurance, but that being said, it is a heartfelt movement that was started 25 years ago in the city of Boca Raton under Mayor Steve Abrams. And Steve was wonderful and just loved the energy and loved to see the students come and have that interaction. And as Commissioner Sacks alluded to, there's 38,000 students in our Exceptional Student Education Program. These ESE students are going to be graduating, and one day will be an adult. What are we going to do with 40,000 children that will be adults? An matter of years. I see it. I see the difference when we go out into the community, and Public Supermarkets is one of our greatest partners. They hire a lot of people with disabilities, and we have grown this program from Palm City of Boca Raton to Palm Beach County, to Martin, St. Lucie, and Indian River, and of course, Broward County was our second. So this has really developed, and it has been created where each year when I call, all these teachers, the ESE director and the teachers all, I want to bring my kids, I want to bring my kids. Of course, I only have one body, four wheels, and it can only be in certain places at certain times, but I can tell you, we try to bring in as many as we possibly can that are going to be transitioning out. I am proud to say that I was on the Florida Independent Living Council, and during that time, as well as my son, was on the Florida Developmental Disability Council, both gubernatorial appointees. And what we did was we created a new set of laws called Early Steps. Early Steps is an early intervention program. So before these students get into the ESE programs, they actually have an ability to be taken care of through county services and identify what their disabilities are, and then target those, if it's physical, if it's intellectual, wherever it lands. This is an amazing step to the directives of our school districts, because when they age out at 22 years old and they don't have a job, again, as Commissioner Sacks alluded to, there is 40,000 students ultimately that will be here. And that translates to 40,000-plus families and extended families, like I have my husband here. So you may have an extended family, because it's very difficult to raise a person with a disability. And to have the help later in years, and to have a father figure or a mother figure is most important in their development. And so I say to you, when you go out into your community, if you know a family that has a person with a disability being raised by that family, give them heads up. Give them time in your life to say hello. Their children aren't going to be playing with your children, but your children can teach them something. Socialization is a big part of this program. When we actually go into, let's say Publix, and these kids come in with their head down, by the time they walk out of that store, two and a half hours later, they're all excited. They got a little goody bag, they can't wait to tell Mom and Dad what they went through. What they went through was a career exploration experience, learning the different skills in the different departments of the store. It's the same model for anything that we do, even in government agencies. We have in the past worked at Channel 20. One of the inspirations of my son, Pat, who wanted to be a videographer, and we have the Film Commissioner here, Michelle Hillary, and she always supports Archer Disability Foundation, so we're very proud of that. And they are also supporting people with disabilities in the production realm, if you will. And we always make sure that we have Pat behind the camera for us when we tape any of the Rose Lee Shows for the past, since 1999, but who's counting? So these things we can teach our children, if you have a skill, if you have a small business, if you have a family member, or a relative, or a neighbor that has a small business, and that they can create a small opportunity for a person with a disability, this is something I would like for you to take away today. Go out there and remember the value and the skills that the National Department of Employ- of, excuse me. I got to get this, I'm just on a roll here, talking too fast. Yes, I know. And so, anyway, the Department of Labor Office of Disability Employment Policy, who creates national disability employment policies, and this month is where my energies come from for many, many years. So I continue to have that hat as a mother, and I would like to introduce to you one of the most interesting people that you will ever meet, Pat Robert Archer. He is the inspiration for Archer Disability Foundation.
Thank you so much.
If Debbie Gibson is in here, could she please come up?
There she is. Years ago, I-
You started?
I started.
With Archer Disability?
I started with Archer Disability Foundation back in 1999, and I continue volunteering as a self-advocate. After eight years of being on the Florida Development Disabilities Council and being reappointed by Charlie Chris and the first Governor Rick Scott, I created public policy on the, creating with Florida laws on the Employment Communications and Task Force Committees to create, self-advoc-, create inclusion for people with disabilities in both the workplace and the community. After eight years of being on the council, I went on to Palm Beach State College to get my associate's degree. Then I went to Florida Atlantic University to get my bachelor's in multimedia degree. And then I graduated, and before I, before I graduated, I didn't have a social life. Then I joined the Full Lifetime Alumni Member Association of Florida Atlantic University, where I create videos and post on my YouTube channel on university events, including alumni events. And now, I work full-time at Excela Mailroom as a mail carrier at Florida Atlantic University Boca Raton Campus, and part-time at Publix.
All right. Okay. Thank you so much. Did you? No.
Good morning.
Good morning. Well, while it is Disability Employment Awareness Month, it is also National Disability Awareness Month. And while majority of the individuals that are served and have been talked about today are ones who seek employment, many need to learn other skills before they can get to that point. So rather than sharing about all our agency and what we do, I wanted to share a letter to the County Commissioners from a family member. Our son Kevin is 30 years old. He was born with a chromosomal abnormality resulting in a severe intellectual disability. He is nonverbal, he needs supervision in all situations, and he requires significant assistance in all areas of self-care. In 2023, the Adult Day program he was attending closed unexpectedly. We were left to find another day program for him. Due to his significant disability, we were unsure if we would find a program that would be right for him and that would be willing to accept him. A friend told us about the Arc of the Glades. Upon touring the program, we were impressed with the services available there, and Kevin particularly loved the sensory room at the facility. Kevin has been at the Arc of the Glades for over two years now. The staff is very caring and very good at their job. They have worked hard with Kevin to improve his communication skills and his self-care skills. We see the improvements at home. Kevin has made friends with other clients at the Arc of the Glades. He has enjoyed some field trips, holiday gift exchanges, and other fun activities while at the Arc. We are happy to transport him to the Arc from our home in Locks, Apache, and back again every day because we think so highly of the program. Even though Kevin is nonverbal, he makes it abundantly clear that he thinks highly of it, too. His smile tells us so. Sincerely, Ted and Eileen Lisitra. They just wanted to let you know that they appreciate the support of the County Commissioners for not just their family and our agency, but all individuals with disabilities.
Thank you so much. All right.
And as we take the picture, I want everybody to know that your county government is an advocate in making sure that we employ those with special abilities. And for this reason, I'd like to have Dr. Khan, would you come up and join? Dr. Khan is our HR Director, and we are a leadership role in this, as I wish everybody else would be as well, as you can hear from these stories.
you can hear from these stories. Thank you very much. Thank you, Dr. Khan.
All right, while they take their picture, I would like to invite folks from the Ben Zaitin Center for Creative Arts. I have the founder and president, Joanne Burkhart, Caroline Harless, Sally Kimball, and Charles Contessa, and any artist in the room. Please come forward. We are declaring October 2025, 2025, I mean, October 25th, 2025, as International Artist Day. Whereas artists is a universal language that transcends boundaries, inspiring imagination, fostering cultural understanding and enriching lives. And whereas artists are storytellers and visionaries who bring beauty, creative creativity, and identity to Palm Beach County, enhancing the quality of life for all residents. And whereas Palm Beach County's art community contributes significantly to both culture and the economy, with the nonprofit arts and culture sector generating more than $335 million annually, supporting over 4,300 jobs and attracting visitors to galleries, performances, and festivals. And whereas the cultural tourism is a powerful driver of local prosperity, attracting over 4 million attendees a year to world-class exhibitions, performances, and special events, spending over $146 million on event-related expenses, and helping to establish Palm Beach County as a premier arts destination in Florida's cultural capital. And whereas research shows that participation in the arts benefits both mind and body, reducing stress, improving mood, fostering cognitive functions, and creating opportunities for social connection and overall well-being. And whereas the Ben Zaitin Center for Creative Arts enriches our community by welcoming renowned glass artists from around the world to share their talents through public demonstrations showcasing their crafts in the largest glass-blowing hot shop in the state of Florida. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Palm Beach County, Florida, assembled on this regular session on the seventh day of October 2025, that October 25th, 2025, in Palm Beach County is hereby proclaimed International Artist Day.
On behalf of the Ben Zaitin Center, I would like to thank the County Commission for this wonderful recognition. Our mission has always been to connect people through art, to bring international artists here to Palm Beach County, and give our community a chance to experience their creativity and cultural perspectives firsthand. This award honors not just our artists, but the collaboration, passion, and support that makes Ben Zaitin a vibrant part of the arts community. And thank you for celebrating the power of bringing art, the world of art, a little closer together. So thank you.
Good morning, everybody. Still morning, yes. If I could ask Andrew Duffel, Abby Sears, and Jordan Garachi to please come forward for the 40th anniversary of the Research Park at F A U. Today, we are recognizing the 40th anniversary of the Research Park at Florida Atlantic University. Whereas the Research Park at Florida Atlantic University, or the Research Park, was created in 1985 by Palm Beach County, Broward County, and Florida Atlantic University, and organized under Chapter 159, Part 5 Florida Statute. And whereas the Research Park was created to promote scientific research and development in affiliation with F A U to foster economic development and broaden the economic base of Broward and Palm Beach Counties. And whereas the Research Park contributed meaningfully to F A U's achievement of the Carnegie Community Engagement Classification in 2020 and Very High Research Activity R1 designation in 2025. And whereas the Research Park has earned industry recognition for its achievements from the International Economic Development Council, Florida Economic Development Council, International Business Innovation Association, and Florida Business Incubator Association. And whereas the innovative activities taking place at the Research Park added $708 million to Palm Beach County's economy while creating 160 jobs, in addition to the 978 already supported in the Research Park in 2024. Whereas the economic impact of the activities at the Research Park is expected to contribute $4.8 billion personal income and 4,591 direct jobs over the next five years. And whereas the Research Park is an integral asset to Palm Beach County's future technological growth and success. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Palm Beach County, Florida, assembled in regular session the seventh day of October 2025, that October 2025 in Palm Beach County is hereby recognized as the 40th anniversary of the Research Park at Florida Atlantic
Thank you very much, Commissioner Woodward, Mayor Marino, all of the Honorable Commissioners, and Administrator Bruso. Your predecessors in 1985 took a visionary step by creating the Research Park at F A U, recognizing that all of the big innovation, knowledge centers of this country are founded around, clustered around major research universities. The work that was begun back in October 1985 has reached a big, important milestone this year, as Commissioner Woodward said, with the various recognitions that Florida Atlantic University has achieved, the thousands of alumni that remain in the area, many of them contributing to the creation of new technologies based in the Research Park, including a graduate of Palm Beach County School System who has created a five-time unicorn, a $5 billion valuation with Modernizing Medicine, and many other companies that have earned or continue to earn hundreds of millions of dollars in revenue, which is important for the overall economy, but perhaps more importantly, by the creation of jobs that are filled by interns at Florida Atlantic University from all walks of life, who are inspired then to create their own entrepreneurial ventures and continue to lead fulfilling lives right here in Palm Beach County without having to go elsewhere to have those careers, and in some cases, create their own companies that then in turn provide employment opportunities and inspiration to others. So we're very proud of where we are today, but we very much look forward to our successes meeting yours in 40 years from now to report even greater successes. But this experiment that you all began 40 years ago is yielding incredible results for your residents and for our neighbors, including all of the families that we represent, the thousand people who work in the Research Park and all of their families. It's a great place, a great invention that you all came up with 40 years ago that continues to have success and will for many years to come with your support and continued investment. So we're very grateful for the proclamation. The Administrator makes a good point. I'd love to invite you all down for another tour. Many of you have visited before, but you're all welcome at any time to visit us.
While they take pictures, I'd like to invite up Centrelia Heinz Bergman. This is a proclamation of the Board of County Commissioners of Palm Beach County, Florida, declaring October 9th, 2025 as Periana Precious Hands Day. Whereas, Centrelia Heinz Bergman, founder and executive director of Periana Precious Hands Incorporated, is a devoted community leader, whose work in Palm Beach County has positively impacted countless individuals and families. Born on September 19th, 1962, in Riviera Beach, Florida, she is the seventh of 10 children, a proud mother of four and a graduate of Suncoast Community High School. And for more than 20 years, she has dedicated herself to building a stronger, more supportive community through mentorship, food distribution, youth education, and with her efforts, having earned recognition through awards such as the Bridges Builders Award and Teacher of the Year Honors. And whereas Centrelia's passion for service is deeply rooted in her upbringing and her role as a mother inspired by her son Malcolm Summers II, 2016's Christmas Wish to Feed the Community, she launched Periana Precious Hands Incorporated Feeding Ministry, name in honor of her grandmother, Perry, and her mother, Leanna, both known for their generosity and tradition of sharing meals. And since its inception in 2011, Periana Precious Hands Incorporated has provided essential services to youth, particularly through the Royal Kings and Queens Mentorship Program as an initiative that offers culinary arts, financial literacy, homework assistance, professional development, and community outreach. And collaborating with local and national businesses, including Trader Joe's, Publix, Tropical Smoothie, Pepsi, and Sean Nira's North End Barbershop, Centrelia's leadership and ability to cultivate strong partnerships have been key to the organization's success. Periana's Precious Hands Incorporated's annual Thanksgiving Community Dinner and December Holiday Spirit Gathering are cherished traditions that serve and strengthen the bonds within communities, and Centrelia Heinz Bergman's unwavering dedication to empowering others. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Palm Beach County, Florida, assembled in regular session on this seventh day of October 2025, that October 9th, 2025, in Palm Beach County is hereby proclaimed Periana Precious Hands Day. Be it further proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Palm Beach County, Florida, that this proclamation is duly sealed, ribbon, and executed by the members of this board. The foregoing proclamation was sponsored by Commissioner Bobby Powell, Jr., and upon unanimous consent of the board, the mayor declared the proclamation duly enacted. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Centrelia Heinz Bergman. I want to thank everyone for this proclamation. We are so, so, so honored. Thank you, Commissioner Bobby Powell, Mayor Mario. Thanks. We want to thank you. We don't take this for granted. We are so excited. And he didn't mention how he comes out and volunteer in his suit. And this is Malcolm Summers II, my son, our son. We started one year. He has always had the, he always say, "Ma, I want to feed millions," from a little boy. I caught him in the kitchen, he was like four or five, cooking. And from that, even to this day, he don't want anybody in the kitchen with him cooking. Yeah, he's been cooking. I mean, I caught him. So I, you know how you, you see these tales of these children, and you say, "No, don't do that, don't do that." But we have to encourage our children when we see the skills of our children. We have our feeding ministry that we feed every Wednesday, and we love seeing people come out. We can't do this without the community helping us with the different partners that we have. We even go out and we see children sleeping in cars, and they still have on their uniforms. So we know that these children have gone to school, and then when they come home, they have to worry about where their next meal is going to come from. And we ask the parents, "What brought you here?" They say they pay our first last security, but if I made $15 an hour, and that's $600 a week, and I only get $2,400 a month, and they still have to take out taxes, we can't afford a place for our children to live. So that's why we see a lot of people out there in the homeless community. We don't care where they come from, what they look like, what they drive. We are out here just to serve the community. Even through our mentoring group, we do free tutoring, homework help, anything that these children need. Once a year, we take, we plan a leadership retreat for these children. We've taken them on cruises. We've taken them to Orlando. We just give these children opportunities of what they may not be able to have with the, you know, with their family, through a holiday function, school supplies, or whatever, you know, feeding hundreds a week. This gives, does our heart good when we see these people coming. So it's not just about sharing and reducing the hunger in the community. We show kindness, hope for our community and neighbors regardless, like I said, what they look like or where they come from. And with our financial literacy class, we're teaching our children how to have a business, how to budget. We even had them write out what kind of business they wanted. They had to write down all their bills, all the bills, and then at the end, write themselves a check. And we taught them how to write a check. And they were surprised, like, "This all I get?" But this is what we're teaching our children, cooking on Zoom. And just, if you all know how to cook, we need you. We cook, we buy everything that the children need, and we cook on Zoom. We just offer these children guidance ages five to 18. And with that said, we, hopefully, the Palm Beach County could help us find a building for our organization and our children because sometimes our house look like a pantry, and it looks like a playground when these children come over. We don't mind it, but we want space for these children so that we can expand, teaching these children how to build things together, crochet, tutor, you know, with our tutoring, and whatever. How many, we teach our children through string, that's the last point. We teach them through science, technology, reading, engineering, math. How many of you have ever thrown a rock in the water? I'm sure all of it. But afterwards, have you talked to the children about understanding the wave formations or the energy transfer by watching how the ripples, the ripples just, the ripple effect of the water or what the rock did? So these are things that we teach our children. It's simple. It doesn't take a lot. But we want to thank you, thank you, thank you for this proclamation. And like I say, we don't take it for lightly. We're so excited, and we say thank you again, and we'll be waiting to hear about that building.
Thank you.
From the Palm Beach County.
Okay, if I could have Alex Miranda, former West Palm Beach Mayor Jerry Moye, and Melanie Roger, please come forward. We are, and anyone else who would like to come up for the Women's Small Business Month in Palm Beach County. We are declaring October as National Women's Small Business Month in Palm Beach County. Whereas National Women's Small Business Month, observed each October, provides an opportunity to celebrate the achievements of women entrepreneurs and reaffirm our dedication to their continued success. And whereas the number of women entrepreneurs continues to grow at a historic pace, with women launching and leading businesses that strengthen our local economy and inspire future generations. And whereas women-owned small businesses are a vital part of the economic fabric of Palm Beach County, contributing innovation, employment, and community leadership across different industries. And whereas Palm Beach County recognizes the unique challenges women face in accessing capital, resources, and opportunities, and remains committed to fostering thriving business environments. And whereas the Palm Beach County Board of County Commissioners, County Administration, and County Departments are committed to the development, growth, and sustainability of women-owned businesses. And whereas the Office of Small Business Development supports women-owned enterprises through certification programs, technical assistance, networking, mentorship, procurement opportunities, and outreach initiatives. And whereas the Palm Beach County Board of County Commissioners are proud to join in celebrating National Women's Small Business Month. Therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Palm Beach County, Florida, assembled in regular session on the seventh day of October 2025, that the month of October in Palm Beach County is hereby proclaimed National Women's Small Business Month. Month.
Good morning, Mayor Marino and County Commissioners, and congratulations, Administrator Abruzzo. Nice to be here. I'm here today on behalf of the Women's Chamber of Commerce of Palm Beach County, and I want to extend to you our deepest gratitude to you, the Palm Beach County Board of County Commissioners, for this very meaningful proclamation recognizing women-owned businesses. Do you know that Florida has more women-owned businesses per capita than anyplace else in the United States? Yes. This is a testament to the persistence, innovation, and determination of women throughout our state. Your acknowledgement not only honors the women who drive economic growth and job creation here in Palm Beach County, but it also brings visibility to the vital role that women play in shaping our community's future. The recognition affirms the hard work, resilience, and impact of women-owned enterprises and strengthens our mission, the Women's Chamber mission, to expand opportunities and support for women in business. Thank you for your continued partnership and for helping elevate the voices and achievements of women in our community. Thank you.
Good morning. Thank you, Mayor Marino, and all the Board of County Commissioners, and again, congratulations on your appointment. My name is Melanie Roger, and I am extremely grateful and humbled to be here today. I stand as a representative and a voice for small business owners across Palm Beach County, and it's my incredible honor to also serve as advisory board member of the Office of Small Business Development, where our mission is to empower, equip, and advocate for growth of small business that form the heartbeat of our community. I also stand here as a proud business owner of Zeus Consulting Services Corporation and Zeus Boss Kids, whose mission is to advance small business and to teach children entrepreneurship at the young age of kindergarten. I know firsthand the challenges and the triumphs that come with entrepreneurship. As women, like you said, we wear many hats. We're not only business owners, but we are mothers, caregivers, mentors, leaders, and community leaders, and community builders. We pour out ourselves in so many ways, and we show up for everyone before even tending to our own needs, yet we still show up to build, innovate, and lead. That's why today's proclamation is so meaningful. This proclamation tells the women of Palm Beach County that are business owners that "I see you." It's a recognition that women whose businesses are not only here, but they're creating jobs, they're generating opportunities, they're fueling our economic growth, and they're saying, you are saying that, "Women, we see you for your courage, your resilience, perseverance, that inspires others to pave the way for our future generations." So again, on behalf of every small business owner here in Palm Beach County, I thank you to the Board of County Commissioners for honoring us as women with this proclamation. Your recognition sends a powerful message that women are not only contributing to our economy, but are shaping the very foundation to make Palm Beach County a stronger, more inclusive, and more prosperous place for us all. Thank you.
At this time, I present a proclamation for Poverty Awareness Week. If I could have to the front, Pathways to Prosperity, Kimberly Bush, CEO, Tara Hels, COO, Ricky Petty, HBB Director, Richard Dames, Circles Director, Hallie Balbuena, Bridges Director, Felicia Hester, Executive Assistant, Takoa Lanier, Outreach Coordinator and Economic Mobility Specialist, Nishacha Jewels-Foberen, Recruitment and Data Management Specialist, Ventoria Murray, Program Manager, and all others here for Poverty Awareness This is a proclamation declaring October 19th, 2025, I'm sorry, October 19th through the 25th, 2025, as Poverty Awareness Week. Whereas on January 8th, 1964, President Lyndon B. Johnson announced his war on poverty, which led to the enactment of Economic Opportunity, of the Economic Opportunity Act on August 20th, 1964. And whereas the Palm Beach County Community Services Department is promoting Poverty Awareness Week to increase awareness of issues related to low-income families in our community. And the Palm Beach County Community Services Department Community Action Program has been coordinating local efforts to fight the war on poverty, providing innovative, cost-effective, and outcome-based economic opportunity to Palm Beach County residents. And the Citizens Advisory Committee on Health and Human Services, Birth to Twenty-Two Alliance, and the Palm Beach County Community Action Program formed the Securing Our Future Initiative, a comprehensive plan to reduce the poverty rate in Palm Beach County by 10% over the next 10 years. And the Securing Our Future Initiative, going into its seventh year, will continue to help families stabilize financially, provide families with skill, building, and internship opportunities, and remove systemic barriers that prevent access to employment and other support services. And during Poverty Awareness Week in October, the Palm Beach County Community Services Department in partnership, partnership, with Pathways to Prosperity, P2P, and other community partners, will host a variety of events and engagement opportunities to promote awareness about the barriers that many impoverished people in our community experience on a Now, therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Palm Beach County, Florida, assembled in regular session on this seventh day of October 2025, that October 19th through the 25th, 2025, in Palm Beach County is hereby proclaimed Poverty Awareness Week. Be it further proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Palm Beach County, Florida, that this proclamation is duly sealed, ribbon, and executed by the members of this board. The foregoing proclamation was sponsored by Commissioner Bobby Powell Jr., and upon unanimous consent of the board, the mayor declared the proclamation duly enacted. Ladies and gentlemen, I pass the mic to Dr. James Green.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Administrator Abruzzo. In 2017, the Citizens Advisory Committee and Birth to Twenty-Two Alliance joined forces to launch the Securing Our Future Initiative aimed at reducing the child poverty rate in Palm Beach County. At the time, it's around 22%. Today, it's dropped below 16%. And this progress is a result of Palm Beach County's continued investment in nonprofit partners like Pathways to Prosperity, Community Partners of South Florida, and now Career Source and Family Promise organizations that provide essential health and human service needs to the families in Palm Beach County. Our focus remains on helping families build human and social capital, creating an integrated system that ensures access to critical supports, and supporting efforts like Roz Coleman Park and policies that drive upward economic mobility. We believe that a person's zip code should not determine their destiny, and we're committed to ensuring that every family in Palm Beach County has the opportunity to earn a living wage. And I want to just introduce one of our key partners in this event, Pathways to Prosperity. The CEO, Kimberly Bush, to say a few words.
Thank you, Dr. Green, to Mayor Marino, and to each of you in your respective places as commissioners, especially you, Commissioner Powell, who has been a champion in this area, in this arena for a number of years, even serving on the Senate. You were a champion for us. On behalf of Pathways to Prosperity, I, Kimberly Bush, would like to express our sincere gratitude to the county commissioners for issuing the proclamation for Poverty Awareness Week. This recognition is vital, a vital step in shining a light on the challenges faced by the many individuals and families in our county. By officially acknowledging Poverty Awareness Week, you are helping to foster greater understanding, compassion, and action within our community. Thank you for your leadership and your commitment to addressing poverty. Together, we can continue to work toward meaningful solutions and a brighter future for all. Standing with me, because we really, we are so committed to this work, I have quite a few of my team members here, but we have four of them who are now employed, three full-time Circles graduates, which is a program that we use to, is an economic mobility program that moves individuals who are living in poverty to sustainability and long-term success. So I'd like to just recognize Ventoria Murray. She's our program manager. She now works full-time with us. We have Hallie Balbuena, who is the director of our Bridges Initiative in Boynton Beach. Very recently, we brought on Takoya Lanier as an Economic Mobility Specialist. And then we have, come on, she's hiding in the back, part-time, we were able to bring on one of our teams that came through the program, Divine, who is now serving as a family support specialist. And lastly, what I would like to do is invite you all, all of you, everyone that's in this chamber, but especially our commissioners, to participate in a few activities that we have planned for Poverty Awareness Week. On Tuesday, October 21st, we will be hosting a poverty simulation. It will be held at Manatee Lagoon on Flagler Drive from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 noon. On Wednesday, October 22nd, we invite all of you to join in a SNAP challenge. That is, that you will agree to eat off of six dollars and 25 cents for the entire day. That's breakfast, lunch, and dinner, and we're asking that you do not use food that you already have in your home, so that you can feel what our families are feeling on a daily basis, those who are living in poverty. And then on Thursday, October 23rd, we challenge you to take public transportation, Palm Tran, to work, to drop your children off to school, or you can meet us, Pathways to Prosperity, on the corner of Federal Highway and Boynton Beach Boulevard, where we will take Palm Tran from that location to Lake Worth, so we can do the north and south, and then we will go west to the Wellington Mall. So we invite you all to join us in those activities, and again, I thank each of you for this recognition. Thank you.
If the following would please join me, the President of the American German Club, Mark Luft, Vice President Doug Christensen, Gail Luft, Holly Downs, Jessica Quasler, forgive me if I mispronounce these, Renee Ferris, Dagmar Braus, and Norm Braus.
Good morning. I love the outfits. This is amazing. So we are declaring the weekends of October 10th to the 12th and 17th to the 19th, 2025, as Oktoberfest. Whereas the first German settlers brought their culture to America through a vast history of celebrations and traditions, including Oktoberfest. Whereas Oktoberfest is traditional harvest time celebration filled with feasting, drinking, music, dance, and dance that brings Americans of German heritage together in fellowship and friendship. Whereas the Palm Beach County Celebration of Oktoberfest has been sponsored by the American German Club of the Palm Beaches on Lantana Road on the second and third weekends in October since 1974, marking this year's Oktoberfest as a 51st annual celebration at the American German Club of the Palm Beaches. Whereas Palm Beach County has a long history of supporting local nonprofit organizations, such as the American German Club, which have contributed to the education, growth, and development of cultural awareness of the diverse heritage of residents of Palm Beach County, including those of German origin. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Palm Beach County, Florida, assembled in regular session on the seventh day of October 2025, that the weekends of October 10th to the 12th and 17th to the 19th, 2025, in Palm Beach County are hereby proclaimed Oktoberfest.
Good morning, everyone who has still left. My name is Dagmar. I am a member. My mom and dad immigrated from Germany right after the war, and I was born 10 months later. So the American German Club has a really important part of me in it. Also, I just want to say, it's really cool that Palm Beach County acknowledges the different cultures, the nationalities, and the importance of where we come from, and let's keep celebrating that. My family is in charge of the hot dog and broth first booth. My mom and dad started it, my husband and I. We continued to work. I have four children. They all work in it with their spouses, and now I have five grandchildren that also are going to sell you a hot dog or broth if you come out to Oktoberfest. Again, like Commissioner Baxter said, it's going to be this coming weekend, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, and the following weekend, it's on Lantana Road. We've been doing this for 51 years. I'd like to introduce our President, Mark Luft. He is the one in charge of putting this all together. He's a volunteer, and a lot of times, it's like herding cats. So I really think he needs a big acknowledgement. The other thing is, I'd like to recognize our Beer Kerningen, Holly Downs, and our Wine Fest Queen, Jessica Quasler. We're all about the liquor and having a good time. So we hope you will join us, and thank you again, Commissioner Baxter, and also Ms. Lopez, your assistant, was really terrific in making sure that we all got this together, and we are very grateful. Commissioners, thank you.
Thank you. So a little fun fact for everyone. The first time I was ever in the Palm Beach Post, I was two years old dancing at Oktoberfest. So thank you for being here.
So thank you all for your patience. As we wind down, we, you know, normally like try to keep everybody to one speaker in three minutes a person, but you know, sometimes we get excited. So on that note, I'm excited because I get to recognize some athletes in the room. So being a professional athlete, this is always fun. Can I bring up Dr. Ava Parker, John Scarpino, Michael, I'm going to butcher your last name, I apologize in advance, Yusefian, Abby Ross, Drew Colvin, Jessica Colvin, Alexandra Hamura, and Jenna Haywang. Jenna and Alexandra are players with the Palm Beach State College Women's Beach Volleyball National Champions. So come on up to the podium here. I'm going to read a little bit of a proclamation recognizing you all. Thank you, thank you. So this is a proclamation of the Board of County Commissioners of Palm Beach County, Florida, recognizing the Palm Beach State College Women's Beach Volleyball National Champions, and whereas the Palm Beach State College Women's Beach Volleyball Team has achieved another historic milestone by winning the 2025 National Championship, and whereas the team's unwavering commitment, perseverance, and competitive spirit have brought pride and distinction to Palm Beach State College and inspired the broader Palm Beach County community. And whereas the coaching staff and athletes of Palm Beach State College have demonstrated excellence both on and off the court, serving as role models for student athletes across the region, and whereas this victory not only highlights the strength of the college's athletic program, but also reflects the values of determination, discipline, and unity that are foundational to Palm Beach County. And whereas the Palm Beach County, whereas- And whereas the Palm Beach County, whereas Palm Beach County proudly celebrates the outstanding accomplishments of the Palm Beach State College Women's Beach Volleyball Team, boy, that's a long, that's hard to say. And recognizes the positive impact their success has had on our community, and whereas the Palm Beach State College Women's Beach Volleyball Team has achieved remarkable success by securing not one, not two, but three consecutive national championships in 2023, 2024, and 2025, bringing honor and recognition to our great county. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Palm Beach County, Florida, assembled in regular session on the 7th day of October 2025, that Palm Beach County is hereby recognized the Palm Beach State College Women's Beach Volleyball National Champions. And I got to tell you, it was hard wearing pink and green today, so I'm just saying, I think I accomplished it. And Dr. Parker, you want to recognize your excellent female athletes? Thank you very much.
I do. Thank you so much, Mayor Marino, and to the members of the commission. We're so excited to be here. You missed this picture, so I'm going to have to have the players and the coaches turn around and show you their championship rings. We're so excited and pretty special to us that you be the person, although we have so many supporters on the commission, that you be the person with this one, because you are an athlete, a woman athlete, and you understand the responsibilities associated with going to college and studying and working and still being engaged in athletic sport, and particularly at the level that these women are playing. Just thank you so much for what you've done for the college and your commitment to the sport, and to Drew and Jessica, thank you so much for making this like it's a full-time job, although we know it's your part-time job, but you provided such leadership with such grace and courage for our students, and we appreciate that. And certainly to Athletic Director John, to his assistant, and to Dr. Rabatus, thank you all, because you recognize that to be a student, sometimes you have folks who are just completely in the academics, and that's great. Some, there are some students who are into like student government, and that's great, they do stuff in the community. But when you're a student athlete and a student, and you excel academically, you're really becoming a role model, not just for fellow students, but also for young girls and young women within our community. So thank you so much for doing that. So we're happy to be recognized. We want you to know that we are a part of the athletic tourism that's developing in our community, and know that when we have those 10 beach volleyball courts and that great arena, and ESPN is here with us for our national championship, we'll make sure you guys have front row seats, because we'd be excited to be about what's really happening within this county. So thank you so much, Mayor Marino, and if we could come and take a picture together, we'd appreciate that.
Well, good morning, everyone. What do they say, you save the best for last? Well, almost last, but still the best. Chris, can you join me up here at the lectern? Are you able to do that? That's all right. Good morning.
Hello, I'm so happy to see you.
Good to see you. So before I read this proclamation, I think it's important to know, I met Chris, there was a little, a situation that had developed, and had that not occurred, we wouldn't have had the honor of getting to know this gem of our community. So we're glad we got it resolved, but we also need to recognize, and you may not recognize her, but when I finish this, you'll know exactly who I'm talking about. Chris Noel was born Sandra Louise Noel on July 2nd, 1941. She began her career in West Palm Beach as a model, later gracing magazine covers, commercials, and stages, before starring in television, films, and alongside Hollywood's legends such as Steve McQueen, Elvis Presley, Ed Burns, and Don Johnson. Whereas, in the 1960s, she became known as the voice of Vietnam through her Armed Forces radio show, A Date with Chris, bringing comfort and connection to American troops in Vietnam and around the world, personally touring combat zones eight times and twice surviving enemy fire. And whereas, her talents extended beyond film and radio as a singer, performer, writer, publishing books including Matter of Survival and Vietnam and Me, as well as being featured in documentaries highlighting her service and career. Chris Noel has received numerous honors for her extraordinary contributions, including the Distinguished Vietnam Veteran Award, the AmVets Silver Helmet Award, and the Hero's Honor Lifetime Award. Whereas, in 1993, she opened Vetsville Cease Fire House Incorporated, a nonprofit shelter serving homeless and hungry veterans of Vietnam, the Gulf War, Iraq, and Afghanistan by providing emergency residential lodging, food, clothing, and employment opportunities, along with referrals and connections to community resources and supportive services. And for more than 30 years, Vetsville's has carried out this mission, lifting up veterans in need and helping them rebuild their lives with dignity and hope. Whereas today, Chris Noel resides in West Palm Beach, continuing to embody service, sacrifice, and dedication, and remains a treasured asset to our community and to veterans nationwide. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Palm Beach County, Florida, assembled in regular session on this 7th day of October 2025, that October 9th, 2025, in Palm Beach County is hereby declared Chris Noel Day. That's okay, you deserve it. Do you want to say a few words?
Yes, I do. First of all, I want to thank you so much. What a wonderful man, and to have acknowledged my life work. Vetsville is very important to me. In fact, I have some people who have really helped me. Kurt and Mike over there, they're with the helicopter crew. They have a helicopter, and you see them all the time in parades. My buddies over there, my girlfriend Lynn, who's been my girlfriend since I was a little girl, and she's been a lawyer for years and helping people have little babies. My friend, who's a great singer right there, Inver. Brian Callpepper, some of you know him, because he was very involved with politics in West Palm Beach. And I don't know where my, where did my stepdaughter, oh, there she is. And I just want to thank, where did you go?
I'm right here.
I'm so sorry. I just want to thank you so much. Eighty-four years ago, I was born at St. Mary's Hospital on my mother's birthday, and I spent 12 and a half years going on the hill. I was in kindergarten, that's the half. And when I left Florida at 17, 18, whenever it was, to go to New York to start my modeling career and my acting career, I never dreamt that I would ever be a movie star. I never dreamt that this would ever happen in my own hometown. But I want to say is that I had a boyfriend, and I asked, I said to him, why don't you come to New York with me? He says, I think you're going to find that there's not going to be any place any better than right here. And I have traveled the world, and I want to tell you, all of us are very, very fortunate people, because we live in Palm Beach County. We are very lucky. Thank you so much. Am I caught? I'm sorry, my friend, it's my new thing I designed.
It's beautiful.
I'm checking it out today, and it seems like some of them go longer. Oh, well. Okay, can I have my friends in the picture too? Kurt, Mike, Lynn, come on Helen, get up here. Come on Helen. This is my stepdaughter, everybody. Reed Moore, this is Allison Moore. Yes, thank you, sir. Okay, I think I've got my friends all here. We're getting Helen. Okay, come on, we have to get closer. I can't get any closer.
All right, while they're taking their picture, we still have a couple more proclamations. Thank you all for your patience. I'd like to bring up the folks at the Jupiter Narrows Mangrove Organization, because today we're going to honor Red Harris. I have, hello there, how are you? Do I need to read all these folks?
I can announce them if you want me to.
How, I'll do this. JP?
That's me.
Okay. Lisa Kruinsky, Martha Harris, Christina Harris Carter, Olivia Harris, Deb Drum, Matt Mitchell, and Jennifer Baez. This is a combination of a lot of groups of people here today, and thank you all for being here. Deb is with ERM. We've got the family of Red Harris, and we've got Florida Conservation Program. We're wondering who those babies belong to? Oh, my pleasure, it's great to see you. So this is a proclamation of the Board of County Commissioners of Palm Beach County, Florida, honoring Andrew Red Harris at the Jupiter Narrows Mangrove Islands, whereas Jupiter Narrows is an iconic water body within northern Palm Beach County, treasured by residents and visitors alike for its scenic beauty, recreational opportunities, and ecological significance, and whereas the Mangrove Islands within Jupiter Narrows provide critical habitat for wildlife, serving as essential nurseries for fish, foraging areas for wading birds, and natural buffers that protect shorelines and water quality. And whereas the late Andrew Red Harris, a lifelong resident of Palm Beach County and avid waterman, was a devoted steward of the area's natural resources, demonstrating a tireless commitment to conservation, responsible recreation, and preserving the waterways he loved for future generations. And whereas the state of Florida retains the sole authority to designate official names for state-owned lands, including the Mangrove Islands of the Jupiter Narrows. And whereas the Board of County, whereas Palm Beach County wishes to formally recognize Andrew Red Harris's legacy and affirmatively express its support for the honorary naming of the Mangrove Islands on the east side of Jupiter Narrows, north of Cato's Bridge, within the Indian River Lagoon, now therefore be proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners, assembled in regular session today, this 7th day of October, that today, and we are honoring Andrew Red Harris at the Jupiter Narrows Mangrove Islands. Thank you so much. Would you like to say a few words?
Yeah, thank you so much, Mayor. It means a tremendous amount to be here today and to have you guys symbolize your intent to see these islands named after Andrew Red Harris, who's such an important person to the Jupiter Narrows waterways, a resident of the waterway there, and naming these islands in his honor, I think will mean a tremendous amount to the family. We've got Martha Harris, Andrew's mother, here. But also symbolizes our intent to preserve these islands forever. We're working on behalf of Ocean Conservancy, on behalf of the Jupiter Narrows Conservation Alliance, with the county, county staff, to get these islands protected and preserved forever, and so we're grateful for you solemnizing your intent to see these islands named. We're working directly with Senator Harrell, who is planning on bringing a designation in the upcoming legislative session to get these islands formerly named by the state. And we've also met with Rep. Snyder, who is planning to do the same, and with Danny Perez, the Speaker of the House. So this is a tremendous amount of momentum. It means a ton to us, and thank you so much for doing this.
And while they're taking their picture, I'm going to call up Trudy Crowitz, and anyone else that's here from Nonprofits First, or in support? Good morning. So we are declaring October 9th, 2025, is Nonprofits First Day, and the work that goes on in this community with the nonprofits that really help make everybody's life better in Palm Beach County wouldn't happen without organizations like Nonprofits First that helps nonprofits become really excellent at what they do. We are declaring there are, whereas there are over 8,500 registered nonprofits in Palm Beach County. These community-based organizations in Palm Beach County serve as a vital force for good, addressing a wide spectrum of community needs from education and healthcare to housing, environmental protection, and support for vulnerable populations. Their collective impact strengthens the social fabric and enhances the quality of life for all residents. And whereas in 2005, the Center for Nonprofit Excellence was established by a coalition of public and private funders, which included the following divisions: Agency Certification Initiative, Education and Technical Assistance, and Management Support Organization. In 2008, the Center for Nonprofit Excellence became Legally Incorporated as Nonprofits First, located in Boynton Beach, Florida. And by 2014, the membership program was created for Palm Beach County nonprofit organizations and was expanded to include for-profit affiliates. And whereas, the first non, first hats-off nonprofit awards to honor the outstanding work of the community was held in 2017, and by 2022, the nonprofit accreditation process included three levels, professional development, and was made available for rising leaders and advancing leaders, with an additional 101 for the 501. Education and training offered to small nonprofit agencies. In 2024, Accreditation 2.0 was launched and included 80 accredited agencies, while launching leaders became the first part of Nonprofits First curriculum in partnership with local colleges and universities. In 20, in celebration of 20 years of Nonprofits First, we celebrate the services they provide to drive causes of every kind in fulfilling their purpose and growing strong in health, capacity, and sustainability in Palm Beach County. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Palm Beach County, Florida, assembled in regular session on this 7th day of October 2025, that October 9th, 2025, in Palm Beach County is hereby proclaimed Nonprofits First Day. Congratulations.
Hello, my name is Trudy Crowitz, and I'm President and CEO of Nonprofits First. It's an honor to be here today, and I want to say thank you to the County Commission and Commissioner Weiss for this proclamation. We're very honored. It's been 20 years since we've been around helping the nonprofit sector. We do work very closely with the county's youth services department, as well as the community services department with your community-based agencies. It's so great to see so many representatives here out in the audience of organizations that we've helped throughout the years. As Greg mentioned, we do accreditation. We have about 80 agencies that we accredit. We vet the agencies very closely, make sure that they're fiscally responsible, that they're doing good governance, best practices, following state and local laws. And then we also, I also want to introduce you to our team that's here today. We have our board members, Virginia Savietto. We have our board chair, Katia St. Prue. We have Janice Brunson and Jennifer Sullivan on our board, and we also have our team here, Callie, Riley, and taking the video is Claudia. And I just want to say thank you again for this opportunity. The work we do is so vital to the community, and we really do hold our nonprofit sector accountable, and we're so happy that the county commission sees that and values that, so thank you.
And I want to, I need to do a shout-out. My wife, Rebecca, her first, when we moved here, her first volunteering was with Nonprofits First, helping with the audits that you all provide for our nonprofits. Yep.
And I did want to mention, we will be celebrating the nonprofit community Thursday at the Kravis Center, but with 600 of our closest friends and family, we're giving away 15 awards that honor our nonprofit sector, the volunteers, the staff, and the organizations for the work they do. Thanks.
And if you're still here for a proclamation, woo-hoo, because this is the last one. So I would actually like to bring up members of our Palm Beach County Fire Department. Dave Dorita, you in the house? Okay. Dave Dorita. Dave and I go way back. We used to go to HR together in gardens, because we were so... I'm not even going to finish that. Dave Dorita, Division Chief Fire Marshal. Ronald Martinez, District Chief. Elise Carhart, Supervisor of Community Education. Terry Lazar. Did I say that right? Or is it Lazar? Laser. Administrative Technician. Dottie Diedrich, Community Educator. David Colado, Supervisor of New Construction. Fatu Benoit, Community Educator. And Ed Moynihan, Video Production Manager. Did I forget anybody? Chief. Deputy Administrator. Anybody else who wants to get in the picture that's wearing white? And has a badge? So this is a proclamation of the Board of County Commissioners, declaring October 5th through 11th, 2025, as National Fire Prevention Week. Whereas Palm Beach County Fire Rescue is steadfast in educating our residents and guests in methods of protecting themselves from potential hazards that may lead to unintended fires and catastrophic injuries. And whereas a current challenge nationwide that the fire service faces is lithium battery technology and their associated fire hazards. And whereas this year, October 5th through 11th, the National Fire Prevention Week theme is "Charge into Fire Safety." Lithium Ion Batteries in Your Home specifically focuses on lithium ion battery safety. Palm Beach County Fire Rescue stresses it is crucial to safely buy, charge, and recycle lithium batteries. And whereas Palm Beach County Fire Rescue has partnered with Solid Waste Authority of Palm Beach County in a public education campaign, Battery Smart, Fire Smart, Lithium Batteries in the Wastream, to bring attention to the alarming fire hazards associated with throwing away lithium batteries in household trash, and promotes safe alternatives for lithium battery disposal and recycling. And whereas we urge all Palm Beach County residents to install smoke alarms and carbon monoxide alarms inside and outside of every room where people sleep, and on the ceiling, at each stairwell landing, and in the main living areas of their home, because these alarms prompt early evacuation and 911 calls to initiate emergency response and swift fire suppression. And whereas everyone can stay informed by visiting www.pbcfr.org to learn more about best safety practices with lithium batteries. So now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Palm Beach County, Florida, assembled in regular session on this seventh day of October 2025, that October 5th through 11th, 2025, in Palm Beach County is hereby proclaimed National Fire Prevention Week. So who gets to talk? Chief? Chief?
Easy, Mayor. Mayor and I go way back with it. That is the truth. Mayor, Commissioners, thank you very much. This is the actual 100th year anniversary of Fire Prevention Week. We are facing an international problem with the lithium ion batteries. And next to me is my entire team of educators and experts in lithium ion. And we really appreciate the support that the commission has given us. And we will move forward in trying to make Palm Beach County as safe as possible. Thank you very much.
All right, who wants it? Come on in. Get close, like we like each other. I know we do.
Can you see us that much?
Narrow the picture.
You got to film it. All righty then. We actually have business to attend to. So we are going to go back to those items that were polled from consent. The first item polled from consent was 3C1. This is an item in District 1. This is an engineering and public works project that has been in the works for a very long time. So Patrick, if you want to give us a rundown, I mean, this, I think, has been on the TPA book since 2001. I think we talked about this first two years ago. The price has escalated, but let's figure it out and move it forward.
Mayor and Commissioners, yes. Joanne Keller. Deputy County Engineer. Also have Liz from County Attorney's Office as well with us. Short story on it, yes. This is authorization to do work to design a five-mile segment of road, Prosperity, for drainage improvements, some signalization, bike lanes, pedestrian improvements. It's not a road expansion. Number of these points. It's a significant endeavor. Five miles is a big, big segment. A lot of work to be done. We've had the benefit of doing similar-type projects, large-scale ones, in other areas throughout the county. And this phase, this aspect, is significant to be able to share with municipal partners. I think this project will touch five different municipalities, and it will include significant interaction with the cities along the way. But we need... It's kind of a catch-22. Need something to show them as well and have a project. So that's what this would authorize. Were available for any questions?
Perfect. Also, I know that we have a card, and I just wanted to add that this is really just a... This is, as you said, we're not widening. This is making this a little bit easier for folks to access widening. When we say widening, we're... This is sidewalks, and I think there was some... There are bike lanes, and there may be improvements to some crosswalks, if I'm not mistaken.
Crosswalks, bike lanes, signalization improvements, and drainage.
And where are we in the process right now? Why are we bringing this here today?
Go ahead.
This is requesting approval for the contract to begin the design work.
Okay. Thank you. We have a card?
Orlando Puyol.
Pujols.
Well, good day, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, Administrator. My name is Orlando Puyol. I'm a council member for the village of North Palm Beach. I live at 149 Eptide Drive. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I rise to respectfully request that Item 3C1 on the consent agenda concerning the village of North Palm Beach be temporarily removed or tabled. We believe additional time is necessary to allow for further discussion between the county and our village. Furthermore, while it is acknowledged that the impact of these projects will be assessed in future stages, it is neither prudent nor responsible to discount stakeholder concerns at this point of the planning stage. The long-range transportation process should actively incorporate the input of all affected parties, ensuring the decisions are made with the benefit of comprehensive feedback and analysis. The village of North Palm Beach strongly recommends continual dialogue among the county, the TPA, and the municipalities. Convening a forum to revisit and discuss municipal objections would reflect a true commitment to teamwork and cooperation necessary to achieve our shared goals for transportation and mobility across Palm Beach County. Again, thank you for your time and your consideration on this motion. Thank you.
I have a couple questions. One is, because this is the design phase and not construction, what is the process of reaching out to, as you said, the five municipalities? And have we done that yet? And what is the plan for the future?
And I guess this work and bringing someone on board would authorize that and initiate part of that process. So we would have some design concepts to share with the cities. The basic concepts have been identified in the five-year, as previously identified in the TPA plan, but moving to a point where you have, actually have something to show, where said improvements at specific locations are going to occur, that's what we would need this consultant for, which would include reach out to all the cities along the way. It would not... There would be nothing finalized or formalized until we have completed a lot of that work and shared that and gotten that feedback from cities along the way.
And this is similar to what we did in Limestone, where we had to go through this process and then have community engagement so that we could refine the plan.
And I would point out, we were still working our way through a significant project in basically West Palm Beach on Australian Boulevard, where we brought a number of concepts, had worked with the cities beforehand, then began working with the neighbors, and made a lot of changes to design work. But it included all that feedback and input.
But we have to start somewhere.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Weiss.
Thank you. I'd like to ask Councilman to please come back. Thank you, sir. I'm not certain I understand. Are you opposing... I mean, what's being proposed is that we start the design of this project and that that would include working with our municipal partners in creating that design? I'm not sure how we would... How... Are you recommending a different way to design this roadway or this... These improvements on the roadway? Because I guess we're not widening the road.
The agenda, the consent agenda, Item 3C1, caught the village of North Palm Beach off guard because we treasure Prosperity Farms Road very close to our hearts. It's in the middle of our village. It has sidewalks. It has bike paths. It has drainage, proper drainage. It's bordered by synagogues, parks, schools. And anything having to do with that road would be critically important to us. So staying involved and very closely collaborating with the design would be very important to us. That's why we're just asking you to take a step back.
Well, but if we don't have any semblance of a design, how can we discuss that with you all?
In generality, it can be discussed in a workshop as to what the design will be.
But we don't know what the design... I mean, that's part of the process of doing the design, and maybe staff can clarify. It sounds like there may be a misunderstanding of how this process actually works. And I want to make sure that we're clearly communicating, that you all have a seat at the table, but...
This is the first step for us, to have something tangible to show and coordinate back with the municipalities on.
So we have nothing to show you until we get somebody to start to work on that? Would you still object to us taking that step?
Yes, we would like to see a narrative as to what the intent of the design will be so that we can collaborate with the design team prior to the project's beginning.
The only narrative we have today is what's on the agenda item, which generally describes a project as bike lane improvements and signalization and drainage.
And that's our concern, because we have signals, we have bike lanes, we have sidewalks. What are you improving? And we really need to know before you start the design.
Sounds like a chicken and the eggs situation.
Commissioner Sacks.
Thank you. And I agree with my colleague, but let's make sure... This is a big number. It's a big project. And I think that today, if you have any time, Councilman, maybe you meet today. You're here, you've got some... If you could put together a time certain for your people to meet with the, you know, the project managers here, I think it's important. You're afraid of changes that are going to occur to your, you know, beloved road without your... Without you even knowing about it, and I understand that. I don't like it either. So let's see if we can't get a time certain and a date certain today before you leave with these good people in the county, so that makes sure everything is... When you walk away from here, you will know the date that you're going to meet with them.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Weiss, you want to respond?
Yeah, would you have any... Our next meeting, I think, is on the... What is it, 21st? Would that be enough time for you all to meet with our staff?
Absolutely.
Okay, so you have comments? Okay, because I was gonna... Okay.
Okay, well, let's... Commissioner Woodward, you were on.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So what we're being asked to approve today is the contract with HSQ Group, who would be the design team that they would need to have these discussions with. So if we... I'm just trying to figure out where we are in this process. So if we do not approve this contract, then they cannot discuss anything with them because they're not going to... They're not going to come and have a meeting unless they have a contract. Is that right? Or am I... Where am I in?
Correct. No work would be performed.
Okay, so I get... I'm just a little confused on, I guess, what we're being asked. If we don't approve the contract, there's no table for any of us to sit at, basically, so...
So prior to the contract being approved...
Are you just asking us to kill this altogether? Or if there's no one for you to have the discussion with, then, I mean, it just doesn't... The project doesn't happen, right, at all?
Well, Commissioner, I can reiterate that we have sidewalks, we have bike paths, we have drainage. We want to know what they're designing. And so just a collaboration of their design team with our village staff would go a long way to keeping transparency and understanding of the tax dollars that are going to be spent on this project that may not be necessary.
And I hear you, and I agree, but we can't authorize a discussion with the design team unless we approve the contract to hire the design team. Do you see what I'm saying?
Well, we don't want to meet with the design team. We'd want to meet with the county.
And, okay, I would defer to the district commissioner on this one, but I do feel if we approve this, you definitely have a seat at the table with the design team. I'm not sure what our staff... I mean, is there anything in a discussion with them beyond, you just said, what's in the agenda is what is to be discussed?
The scope of the work, is it attached as part of the contract? And we can spend some time and share that piece. Overarching, I could give you 100% commitment, we will be working with all the cities who are touched by this project, the way we have done on previous projects as well. You won't know what level of significance you might get into on certain drainage improvements or other things until you start rolling up your sleeves and doing some of that work. So I heard it said earlier, it's a little bit of a catch-22 here. To have something to react to, we would need the professionals to begin design work, working with the cities, getting the feedback. So then you could start to put pen to paper with how far this project would need to go.
Okay, and this was first presented to the Goal Setting Committee in November 15th, 2023. And then it was, you know, December 11th. There's a number... There's like a few years of this moving forward. So I guess I'm a little confused on why this is bubbling up today to not do it. It's been part of our five-year plan with TPA. Has this been an ongoing discussion? And I'm just not aware of it, because it's like an hour from where I live.
We've had it on the books with TPA since... We've had it on the books with TPA since 2021, if I'm not mistaken. Yeah, so this has been four years that this has been a discussion, an ongoing discussion.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Powell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I want to say Councilman. Is it Commissioner or Councilman?
Councilmember.
Councilman. And per our discussion, and I had a discussion with our Assistant County Administrator and the Engineering Department on yesterday, and of course, this is not just North Palm Beach. It includes several other municipalities, and the amount of $1,831,869.34 for just the initiation of this project. And in our discussions, I was assured by our county engineer, as well as our Assistant Administrator, that there would be conversations and workshops, and it would be all-inclusive of all of the municipalities that were involved, are involved in this project. Of course, some of the issues that are outlined, as the Assistant Administrator indicated, you don't know until the process is started. I have comfort in knowing we have worked on a project similar on Australian Avenue, and there were a number of conversations that include... that included city staff, county staff, stakeholders from the community, as well as Engineering Department and contractors. I assure you that the same will be done here. I know that the mayor will assure you that she'll be involved, and if necessary, county staff, mayor, and we can't be in the same meetings, but however we can help to make sure that it brings a level of comfort to you, as well as the Village of North Palm, we are willing to do that. And again, you know, we discussed expending the $1,831,869.34 for this contract. It has to initiate the process. And of course, the Village of North Palm Beach will absolutely have a seat at the table. And because of your work and your effort, you will have the opportunity to make sure that you're leading that charge in terms of if the modifications to that portion, remember, it's going through a number of different municipalities, this improvement, and it won't start. Of course, administration can tell me, but the process will not even start, I believe, for the next six months before there's a conversation. But I can assure you that I'm comfortable with the idea and the fact that you all will have a seat at the table. Am I right, Mr. Rutter?
Yes, that is absolutely correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Flores?
Councilmember Pudo, first of all, thank you for reaching out to me during this week and having a conversation with me. And it's always important that local municipalities have a voice and that they feel comfortable reaching out to us commissioners. In this particular item, I, I will always, and I told you this over the phone, that I tend to defer to the district commissioner on, on the decision moving forward as to what will happen here. I feel comfortable moving forward with this particular planning and design process because it will allow you the opportunity to have a seat at the table. So we're not, we're not too far down the road to, to begin that. And, and to be honest with you, it's talking about bike lanes, signal upgrades, drainage modifications. So to me, these are things that are important in, I think, to the, to your village and to the community at large. So I'm okay with moving this forward. If there is a motion to delay it for two weeks, I'm, I'm also okay with that. But I think this is an important project for the, for your district, Mayor Marino. So I, I will go along with, with what you, what you think is best.
Thank you. And Commissioner Sacks?
I think I said before, just make sure, your government, your government, governments should talk to each other. So come back and, and as you may, you know your, your community better than anybody else, except for the mayor. She knows it pretty well, too. So I think that if you just talk to each other, we can move this forward and get these improvements done. If you don't do it there, come on down to my district. I could use some of the money. But I think it's pretty common sense. Thank you for being here, sir.
Well, I think I'll wrap this up, but I do want to point out that in the backup documentation, on page 39, it says optional services, and it talks about public involvement and community outreach, and flyers and information sheets. So what you're asking for is in this contract, but if we don't approve this contract, we don't have that opportunity. So for us to move it forward today is important for you all because that gives you the opportunity for the feedback, just like the process that we do with any other project like this, like I referenced Limestone Creek, because that's one we did also in the north end of the county where we had to hire a design firm. They came, they met with all the stakeholders, and with, meeting with the stakeholders, made a lot of changes to the design. But unless we have one, we don't know what to change or improve or get rid of. So I, Commissioner Flores, was that a motion that you made to move this forward? So I have a motion from Commissioner Flores, a second from Commissioner Woodward. Commissioner Powell, your light is still on.
Well, I'll just say this, Mayor, if it's, I agree, it's $1,831,869.34 that we're putting in this process. So when it comes to the expenditure of that type of funding, and this is only, of course, this is not, this is just the beginning of looking at the improvements, not the entirety of what will be expended on the entire project. So with that, I can agree.
Okay. And I do want to say that you will have, absolutely, all five municipalities and the county will have a seat at the table. It's what we do with all of our projects when we, when we deal with the community and with different municipalities. This is what happens when you have a county road going through a municipality. We can't do it with partners. You will be at the table.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So I had a motion and a second. All in favor, all opposed? See that that motion carries 7-0. And thank you for coming today. Okay, I think we are on to our second item that was polled from the consent agenda, which is 3Q2. And we have cards. Got to go to Q. It's before, before S and U. Alrighty, who's doing the presentation? And Commissioner Powell, you pulled this, so whatever questions you might like to ask, go for it.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I will look for the presentation from staff. One of the, from my understanding, one of the issues, or one of the reasons that this particular, we're looking at a termination of a couple of grants, and a termination of the UpTrust/Fillware contract, number 21-033/LI, First Amendment of the memorandum. And, and the idea is, after careful consideration and reassessment of the SJC initiative, Palm Beach County has determined that the initiative no longer aligns with our current strategic goals. So a part of it is to find out the reason for determinations. And we had some of these conversations yesterday, but I know there are members of the public who are here, as well as what are the strategic goals that the county has realigned in terms of criminal justice. So if this, if staff will do the presentation, we can go from there.
Perfect.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And we'll have a very brief presentation for you, and Stephanie Shanahan, our Director of Public Safety, will begin.
Good morning, almost afternoon, Commissioner, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, Administrator Bruzo, Stephanie Shanahan, Director of Public Safety. So we just put together a brief PowerPoint to provide an overview of the Safety and Justice Challenge Grant, as well as just some information related to the grant as far as funding goes, and some of the work that's been going on in the CJC. So the Safety and Justice Challenge Grant was an initiative of the John D. and Catherine T. MacArthur Foundation that was created to reduce over-incarceration by changing the way America thinks about and its use, and uses its jails. The primary goals of the CJ, of the SJC grant have been to safely reduce the jail population and address racial and ethnic disparities within the jail population across participating sites nationwide. The grant period of this grant was May of 2015, and it's planned to end December of 2026. So since 2015, that was when the initial application was submitted, and we were awarded $150,000 for the planning of the grant. In 2016, the implementation application was submitted, and we were awarded $150,000 as a partner site. In 2017, a second implementation application was submitted, and Palm Beach County was awarded $2 million for implementation. And then in 2022, the sustainability application was submitted, and Palm Beach County was awarded $1.4 million. In 2023, Palm Beach County was awarded $875,000 in February to continue efforts to safely reduce the jail population and increase community engagement. And then finally, in 2024, the Safety and Justice Challenge Capstone application was submitted, and Palm Beach County was awarded $234,000. So this is just an overview of each of the grants. The next two slides, the first is the Safety and Justice Challenge Sustainability Grant. And as of August 1st of 2025, the balance is $428,857. And that balance is slightly lower if we, we're working on year-end statements right now with the Clerk's Office and finalizing all the payments. So that, that balance would be lower, not too much lower. And then the next slide is the Safety and Justice Challenge Capstone Grant, and that balance as of August 1st of 2025 is $229,000. And in there are going to be projects on both of these spreadsheets that the grant funds. And moving on to some of the activities that the Criminal Justice Commission has put together prior to the Safety and Justice Challenge Grant, these are some initiatives that, that were brought forward as part of the Criminal Justice Commission and all the subcommittees that are part of that commission. One of the band, is Ban the Box Initiative. You know, we don't ask for individuals to identify whether they've been convicted of a crime or arrested. We also have cities and schools, our crisis intervention training for law enforcement, drug-free school zone program. We have the youth court, juvenile first offender program. These are just some of the few. And then the CJC has also funded over the years several different programs and other departments and/or initiatives in other areas of the county. So they have many funding sources that are applied to that. And then...
So, so the question is then, why are we coming to, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Can you go back to that? Okay. Some of those initiatives, are those initiatives directly related to the CJC? Or are those initiatives related to this grant? If this grant is eliminated, will these initiatives be eliminated? And for, as an example, some of these initiatives I'm familiar with, for example, Ban the Box. I know I ran legislation when I was in the state senate with regard to Ban the Box. It didn't pass, but we, we did run the legislation. And then communities and schools, or cities and schools, I know that program has been around since probably even before I was a kid, because I know people who participated. So are these attached to the grant? Do these go away? What happens? Or do, do these remain, and how are they funded?
Yeah, if these are not attached to the grant, these are just initiatives that the CJC prior to the grant has implemented over the years. So we wanted to kind of encompass some of the work that's been done by the CJC prior to the grant.
Thank you.
And then the last slide Todd's going to go over.
So the question is then, why are we coming to you now on this particular item and looking to transition from the Safety and Justice Challenge Grant with MacArthur and moving forward? A few years ago, and I know that Ms. Regina Herring is here today, is one of our former CJC directors, you know, came to me when I was working directly with her, and she was Executive Director, and said, you know, we've got an issue with law enforcement right now with the CJC. And they've not been at the table. They're, they're stepping back from the work at the Criminal Justice Commission. And subsequently embarked on about a year and a half plus opportunity to sit down with members of law enforcement, Angelique and myself and some others, spent considerable amount of time meeting with them. And in those discussions, the issue of MacArthur and some of the programs that we funded through that came up as specifically reasons that they had left the table, amongst other things. So the effort to get law enforcement back on the table has been ongoing. They have come back to the table slowly, and starting to begin to participate again, which is important to have all of your key stakeholders at the table when having deliberations of these high-level public safety issues. So in an effort to help restore some of that confidence in some of our different partners in the criminal justice system, primarily law enforcement, this is one step that we can take in order to do that. There are a lot of things that law enforcement brought to us about what other things can we be doing on our agendas at CJC. And what they had seen was that our agendas became dominated by a lot of the initiatives that we were funding through these particular grants. And so moving from there, starting fresh, and allowing some more of those ideas to come to the table, including some of those pre-SJC grants, was an opportunity to do that. It doesn't mean that the things that we've been doing with some of the SJC, SJC funding, like our text initiatives for court dates, like some of our pre-trial work that we've been doing, can't continue. And we will continue to work to try to take some of those initiatives that have been doing well to move them forward. It's just, it's a good opportunity to our stakeholders to allow for that to continue forward. It allows us also to reassess and build a framework to restore some more transparency amongst our community partners and some, and all of our criminal justice stakeholders. It allows us some ability to focus on improvements related to the criminal justice system. There are a lot of new members of the CJC with great new ideas, and the timing of this, I think, is very good in terms of bringing some of those ideas in there. I don't think it's a secret that some of the funding from MacArthur and SJC has been under scrutiny from both federal and state partners around the, the state and the country. And those are certainly issues as well that we look at and we take into consideration about how some of these programs have been received and what some of the consequences of those that, that have, they have had. This will also allow us to reset some of these priorities as we ensure that expectations are met in relation to the needs of Palm Beach County. Again, you know, we've spent a lot of time with our staff at Criminal Justice Commission focused on these SJC initiatives. This will allow us to expand that. And then finally, just want to talk about our new leadership. County Commissioner Joel Flores, who serves on the, on the CJC for the Board of County Commissioners, has some great new ideas that he's brought. He has shared a number of those with the committee as well as staff. We have a new administrator, a new deputy administrator, Mr. Tom Nadler, and also a new Executive Director of the CJC. So from a timing perspective, we thought this was a good time to sort of move forward and then relook at the CJC about its, its need and what some of the initiatives we'd like to do going forward. And that, Madam Mayor, concludes our presentation.
Thank you. Commissioner Flores, do you want to add anything?
No, I, you know, I think everything that staff has proposed here is in alignment with what we're trying to do. I think getting law enforcement to the table is, should be a priority to the CJC. And this, this funding mechanism is coming to an end, no matter what. So I think we're just moving it along a little, a little quicker so that it gives us the ability to do the things that the board actually wants to do, and not to be beholden to the requirements of some of these grants. So I think that's sort of the direction of, of the board. I'm, I'm, I feel comfortable with moving that forward. I think we're just advancing the inevitable, so.
Thank you. Commissioner Weiss?
Thank you. So I just want to get on the record. There were, yesterday during our discussion, we talked, we talked about this. And I know one of the questions I asked you about was the mobile van for probation services. I know that was something that our community has benefited from, and you assured me that that, that is going to continue to operate. And I just...
Yes.
Okay. And then also in, in regards to the texting of, of the dates for people to get to court, or their appointments that they, they need to get to, that that also, that is also going to be continuing?
So we're going to work through the current agreements that we have that are outlined as a result of this grant, and work on trying to bring something back to the board to, in order to continue those programs. I think it's up to the board to decide what programs we want to continue as a result of this grant, and what programs that may go away. Some of the agencies might be able to pick up those programs on their own, and some of them may not be able to. But at this time, to make that decision on what's going to continue or what's not, I think it would be in the best interest of staff and this board to bring back something in its totality to make sure that, you know, things continue, you know, at the direction of this board.
And I would expect that we're going to, you will have data, do you, you have data available showing...
Data, numbers, what's been spent.
No, 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 no. About, about how well the programs, these, these programs worked.
Yes.
That's what, I think that's what we're, I think all of us are interested in, is understanding those that have been successful, that we need to continue, find a way to continue to fund those, because that was, that's part of what we were doing, was a proof of concept to learn how, you know, how we may make sure that this is a safer community for everybody.
Understand, yeah. We will bring back all that information so the board has everything to make that decision.
And just to follow up, our staff at CJC has been working since the beginning of the year to identify new funding opportunities to... the year to identify new funding opportunities to continue, because we would need to do that, to continue, you know, any programs that we want to going forward, and also look for funding for other initiatives and programs that we'd like to bring back to the CJC to advance.
Thank you. Commissioner Sacks and then Commissioner Flores.
Well, I want to commend the CJC for all that you do. This is a business and profession I've been in for 40 years. When it comes to pre-trial release and reminding folks that they have a court date, this is all initiated by defense counsel, not by any community or grant. It's a defense counsel that asks for this on behalf of his client or her client, and we pay for this service, and it's a good service. And it keeps people out of jail pending their first appearance, so that everybody is really served by this. But it's certainly initiated by defense counsel for their client, paid by the client for this service, which is excellent. So I'm glad that we're doing a review, and I'm glad that all the parties are being at the table to discuss it, because it's a good program and it serves the people of this county. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Flores and then Commissioner Powell, because you pulled it, we'll let you finish. And we have cards. Commissioner Flores.
So, just caught me off surprise earlier. I want to put two things on the record. One is that I want to continue serving on the CJC. It's something that I've learned a lot in this past year. It's not just one committee. I think there is about five or six total committees that encompass the CJC. And then regarding the funding mechanism and this grant going away, we are actively seeking alternative grants at different levels. So we are actively doing that, because there are some programs that we want to continue to collaborate with our partners in the community. So I think that needed to be said. And, yeah, I'm excited about this, about what the CJC, how we're trying to shift our focus to be more inclusive. And, you know, we keep talking about, you know, investing in the community and some of these grants that we give out. The whole point of those grants is to prevent, you know, the problems in the back end. And a lot of the conversation that we keep having regarding the criminal justice is jail population. And I think ultimately, if we decrease jail population, the community at large wins. That means that we don't have issues, that we don't have concerns. So I think, you know, this goes right in hand with some of the grants that we give out to the community, to nonprofits. They're doing great work in the community. So I just, I think it makes, it's very important that we focus on investing in the front end instead of the back end.
Thank you, and thank you for your service on that board.
Yeah, prevention and education, we don't want to put people in the system, we want to keep them out of the system.
So Commissioner Powell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. One of the questions I had is related to the termination of the first grant, the SJC Sustainability Grant, 22-2001-154459 CJ. That's for $875,000. And as I look at it, it looks like that's from October 1st, 2024, to, no, that's, that's the previous one. The previous one looked like it ended in 2024 December, I think. Is that correct? And is that ongoing? How does that work?
I can answer that if you want.
I would do the no-cost extension to extend that through the entire grant term to December 2026 for the rest of the remaining monies.
How much is remaining that we will be foregoing?
That's the slide, I don't know.
Yeah, so up there, as of August 1st, we had $428,000. So we've got probably under $400,000 in that, in that particular grant. I would say around $350,000 to that range.
Are the money that's been expended, do we have to return any of it?
No.
Okay. The other grant, the one that looked like it was for about 230, was it 230,000 or 234,000?
29,000, that's currently in the balance as of August 1st, probably a little slightly less than that, but that's our Capstone Grant. That was the last grant that we were eligible to get from the MacArthur Foundation for SJC. That's sort of their final grant that they give any property who has participated in their program.
So I heard Commissioner Flores say earlier that these grants were sunsetting anyways, that, so they're not moving forward and they're not evergreen, that we wouldn't have the ability to apply for them again, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Earlier, you indicated that, and since we're in the sunshine and we don't have the opportunity to speak, that since Commissioner Flores is on the board, he has brought forth some new ideas. Commissioner Flores, you want to share some of those ideas, if you would? You don't have to share all of them, I'm sure you have a lot.
So one of the things that, by the way, thank you for the question. Some of the things that we have seen is that, early on, we identified is law enforcement is not at the table yet. A lot of these issues have to do with law enforcement. So I know that Todd and the administration has been working diligently to try to get them back to the table. I think two meetings ago, we finally had the Chief of Police from Gardens, who has now joined the board. But we need PBSO, which is the largest law enforcement body in the county, to be part of this conversation. I think some of these grants have unfortunately pushed them away for whatever reason, that basically before I got here. I think some of the other items are, Public Defender has brought up some great areas that he wants to be able to work on and concentrate, and we're working with some of the board members to be more of the leading agents, since they are the ones that are really touching on people's lives on an ongoing basis. So we, the county is sort of the mechanism for the funding and the structural support. We really have, you know, we don't touch on these people's lives. It's law enforcement, it's the state attorney's office, it's the public defender and the jail. So we want to make sure that the emphasis is on them to be able to drive the conversation. And obviously, the community at large has to have a voice. So I think that's what we're trying to do, is sort of re-shift the priorities and make sure that the people at the table are actually the ones driving the conversation, instead of a grant driving the conversation.
Thank you. Follow up with regard to that, staff, the commissioner indicated that the public defender is involved. Is the, I'm not very familiar with the SJC, I haven't been to a meeting in a while, but is the state attorney also involved? And they're both involved?
Yes. The state attorney is a member of the CJC, as well as the public defender, the clerk of courts, a number of, you know, different elected officials, and, you know, the Police Chiefs Association has a seat at the table, the chief of the City of West Palm Beach Police Department has a seat at the table, a state representative has a seat at the table. It's a 35-member board that includes both public and private members.
Thank you. One of the issues with the grant, it says, is to support sustained, comprehensive efforts to reduce jail incarceration and racial and ethnic disparities in jail usage as a site in the Safety and Justice Challenge. Is a part of the problem now directly related to the language of racial and ethnic disparities? And is there a program or grants now, we, of course, we passed legislation or passed policy that we couldn't deal with racial or ethnic? Is there, what would be the intent of the new grants? Are we still working to reduce jail population inclusive of everyone, especially racial and ethnic? Or is the idea still to reduce jail population? Or what is the new, what is the new strategic priority?
So I, just specific to jail population, we have focused a lot on the issue of reducing jail population. I think one of the, you know, upsides of the pandemic has been that we saw a decrease in jail population. That was certainly what was indicative of the data and the numbers that we saw in doing that. Subsequently, you know, that number has risen a little bit, but we still have seen, you know, disparities in jail populations that exist between, you know, African-American, Hispanic, you know, Caucasian in jail. But that's not an issue, I think, that's specific to our county or anywhere else in the country. We've seen that across the board in data and studies that we've looked at. I think it's still the intent to do things to reduce jail populations. Those are some of the issues that the public defender, that Commissioner Flores, had spoken about, and looking at some other creative ideas that he's bringing to the table on ways that we can maybe move along. Court dates, how we can get folks, you know, out of jail more quickly who are waiting pre-trial. And that's some of the things that we as staff are trying to engage with the public defender and state attorney in helping to facilitate some of those initiatives. So, you know, there are things that we can do locally with our existing staff and with the ideas from the state attorney and public defender to advance some of those initiatives on. So yes, we'll still be focused on, you know, some of the jail populations, but I think the idea that we're looking at here is building new partnerships, bringing other partnerships back to the table that haven't been there. And I know that there's a lot of creative ideas out there that we can collectively work with.
Thank you. Is it related to specifically jail or jail and prison?
I think specifically to jail from our perspective.
You talked about, you referenced new partnerships, and I know we talked about law enforcement. What other, if you know off the top of your head, if you don't, that's fine too, other types of partnerships are you embarking upon with regard to the strategic goals and relationships that we want to work on moving forward?
First and foremost, Madam Mayor and Commissioners, you know, we have a lot of new members that I alluded to on the board. So we've got a lot of new elected officials that have joined, we have a lot of new folks from the private sector that have joined. Recently, we've had the director of the healthcare district and Career Source that have been a part of it. Those were directors from specifically the Board of County Commissioners to add those on there. So we're really kind of digging in a little bit more, working on some of the healthcare-related aspects to criminal justice, some of the workforce side of it, and how we can work on employment programs to get folks engaged, which is why you've got HCD as well as Career Source as part of that. But I think too, you know, repairing some of the relationship with law enforcement, getting back to the table with them, and moving forward with some of the initiatives that they'd like to see, you know, some of the localized types of, you know, localized funding initiatives for equipment, focusing on some of the policy side of issues that we worked with in law enforcement, on how to deal with real, specific, on-the-ground problems that we've seen in Palm Beach County.
Thank you. Is there a tool that we can use that measures or evaluates the success previously of the CJC? And what will be moving forward? Do we have, is there something that we can look at? As new director, director, right? Have you looked at the results? What's the evaluation method or methodology that's being used to see the successes or shortcomings of the existing CJC? And how will we evaluate those moving forward?
From all the historical documentation...
Speak into your mic, please.
I'm sorry. That's okay. From the historical documentation that I have access to, there was an evaluation done probably in 2015. I have not seen that one was done since then. So that's something that we could look into.
Okay, thank you. At this time, Madam Mayor, I have no further questions.
Thank you. And just a reminder, this is not, we're not sunsetting the CJC, we're just talking about a particular grant that's within the CJC. And I think this is a great opportunity for us to actually take a really good look at what the CJC does, the partners that we have, and how we can build on those partnerships. Commissioner Woodward and then Commissioner Flores. And we also have several cards, and then we had also sent a memo out that at 12:30 we were going to take a break to go down and take a picture with Lighthouse, because we have a Palm Tram bus downstairs. So we'll figure out, as we get closer to 12:30, we'll figure out where we are on the agenda. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. And I just, I wanted to thank Commissioner Flores for your comments on this, because I think it's important for our residents to hear that, this is not about this necessarily going away, but maybe a bit of a rebalancing, because we've talked a lot about reducing jail population, and even nationally, there's language about, you know, oh, early release of criminals and what happens. And part of reducing jail population should involve crime prevention, because that way we're not getting people into the system, and we're always working from, they're now in the system, how do we help them on that part? So striking the right balance of having both of those, because it would be better for the individuals not to be incarcerated in the first place, and it's also a win-win for the communities. Crime prevention, every community wants to live without fear of crime, whatever the crime is. So I think having law enforcement coming back into this, it does kind of, it strikes the balance that is needed. And this happens, you know, the pendulum always swings, and now we're kind of coming back to the middle, where we can do both, and we should. So I want to thank you for this coming forward, and I do support it. And just a reminder, we do have four cards, so.
Thank you. Commissioner Sacks and then Commissioner Flores.
I want to thank also Commissioner Flores, as well as Commissioner Powell. This whole idea is, of course, to reduce the jail population and pre-trial release and supervised release, you've got to have law enforcement. Because if law enforcement doesn't agree that this defendant should, instead of having to post a bond, which helps, you know, which, you know, is very much in aid of our indigent folks who are in this situation, but if they can show that they will return to court for the court appearances, then they can be released without posting bond, a monetary bond. And so it helps, it helps the indigent. But if law enforcement comes and says they don't want it, and they're opposed to it for whatever reason, then most chances, the court will not grant it. So if we don't have law enforcement at the table, we're talking about something that is absolutely meaningless. And the same, so this entire thing goes around the parties. You're in a courtroom, you've got a court judge, you've got a judge, you've got law enforcement, you've got a suspect, I wouldn't call him a defendant, he's just a suspect. And he has an attorney, or she has an attorney. Those are the players, and those are the players that need to be at the table to determine how best we can help the people who may have been charged with a crime. So thank you for bringing it up. Thank you, Commissioner Powell, for also opening the discussion. But yeah, it's a very important purpose, CJC does, and let's bring all the parties to the table. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner Flores.
So I actually want to thank Commissioner Powell for the questions. I think they're very good, timely. I think these are discussions that we need to definitely have. And I look forward to partnering with everybody on this board to continue to do this work. But most importantly, I want to recognize the CJC staff, their dedication, their professionalism. I think they're top-notch. I think they are truly committed to making this community better. And I wanted to recognize you, Ms. Pickett, for the work that you do and your staff, I think is top-notch. And to the community, I mean, when you go to these meetings, is, some of these meetings are 40, 50 people deep. So the community is very involved in this process, and they should. And I'm the biggest fighter for any inequities. So if I see any inequities regarding any of this process, I'm always asking questions about, why is the black population the highest in the jail? And so to me, that's important conversations to be had. But we need, we need the community, we need to get everybody, the key players, to the table and have the discussion keep going. And that's why I think sort of refocusing some of the efforts and the strategies moving forward are really important to making sure that we serve our community and that we don't have, I know that a lot of the focus is jail population, but it's getting people to not do dumb things sometimes. Because I think some of the times is we do dumb things. And one of the major issues that they have is, some of these people can't be released because they don't have a place to go, call home, they don't have an address. So if they don't have an address, they can't be released. So these are some of the issues that we're facing in the CJC that I look forward to finding solutions to.
Thank you. Commissioner Woodward.
Okay, we have Regina Herring, David Ray, Barbara Sheaves, and Jane Tierney.
Thank you. We have two microphones, so you can, there's two podiums you can use.
I guess we're in the afternoon, I thought we'd be here in the morning. Regina Herring, I am the former executive director for Criminal Justice Commission here in Palm Beach County, 255 Northwest, 255 Northwest 9th Avenue, Derry Beach. Just wanted to, you all made some very great comments, and I've been here and worked with SJC. This is 10 years of legacy that this funds are for. As Mr. Powell said, you only have, and as the staff said, you only have about less, maybe 10% remaining. All of what you said as far as ideas of what could be done, could still be done with these dollars. Pre-trial is a system, it's... It's your system. Jail release is a county system. And what you do with it, it's your ideas and how you implement those. Whether you have these dollars or not, or not, law enforcement still needs to come to the table. Law enforcement is still to the, at the table. We have a, a strong and robust community engagement. These funds support, and that's what we want to be able to continue. You should want to continue. A lot of things, HB7, if you know, years ago, the state did not allow us to do any more racial, ethnic training, racial and ethnic trainings. We stopped that. But we continue to want to do systems reform work. And you have 10 years of legacy. And to, to me, it would be an unprecedented misstep to start giving away philanthropic, non-public dollars that are meant for partnerships. It's, it's community partnerships that these dollars, and you set this, you set the stage. When you apply for any of these dollars, you set the parameters. The goal was yes, to reduce jail population. But that's for county, the county, and that was a priority of the county. You still want to do that, you said. So, why give away the dollars? Continue using those dollars to do the same things that you said you want to continue to do. It's just, it's, I'm not understanding what it is we're trying to do because a lot of what you said is what these dollars are intended to do. You've got a robust group and a great staff that's been working on this. The commission has been 35 years. 10 years of its work has been toward the safety and justice work. And really, you have all of the players at the table. Law enforcement, the sheriff is an active engager. Riviera Beach, Delray Beach, there are other municipal law enforcement agencies that are at the table. So, I just would implore you to really rethink the use of these dollars and to not terminate free, I say free monies, because they don't want the money back. They really want us to do what we feel we can do to improve and reform our criminal justice system. But that comes from you at the dais to make those decisions. And I think all of what you said to me are things that these dollars are designed to do. You just decide what that is. It doesn't say you have to give it back. I just don't want to see the precedent set of returning philanthropic dollars.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, County Commission. I had a whole thing ready to say to you, and that went out the window. Some of you know me from community work and being an active member of my community, working in political spaces.
Could you identify yourself since you didn't?
My name is David Ray.
Thank you.
I'm a resident of Palm Beach County. Today, I come to you as a member of two different subcommittees representing two organizations. I'm a parent and a concerned citizen. The information that was brought before you all, let's just say, some misconstrued ideas. First, I'd like to say I was, I'm really emotional because I was thrown off by the side that said to terminate the CJC grant to restore confidence in various criminal justice partners. I would like to give a special acknowledgement to the Palm Beach County Sheriff's Office that has been at every meeting I've been to. They are active members of the subcommittees. I don't know at the CJC, at the highest level, if you're struggling to get them there. We have great involvement from all levels, whether it's public defenders, the prosecutors, law enforcement. But it's also about community engagement. The criminal justice continuum is something that does not just start or stop in the jail. And a lot of the work that we do is to serve our community, and we're doing that. I'm sorry, Ms. Sacks, Madam Sacks, the text, that's not how that works anymore. The text program is different. We are seeing these numbers improve and reduce jail populations and keep us, and increase our cost savings. We actually see the population shifting, and yes, you're right, the black population is a concern, but our work is actually benefiting the white population as well. We've re-changed some names so that we can be in alignment with what's happening at the state. But a preventative cut, preemptive, I think respectfully, it shows almost like cowardice. Palm Beach County is a jewel, and we have a lot of good things happening here. There's no reason that we can't stand up and use a little bit of political bravery. And if they want us to cut the program, let them tell us to cut the program. But I would assume, in my heart of hearts, that the only reason it's being brought up is because in somewhere in the language, we hear black and brown people, and we don't want to step on any toes. We're at the tail end of this. To show support to the board and the community members that sit on the boards and the different subcommittees, I think it's just allowing us to do what we've been doing and then actually get you guys to come and see what's the work that's being done before we start making cuts and making judgments. Because a lot of what I've heard today is very infuriating considering how much law enforcement has been at the table. Also, there's two people losing a job over this. I think that's kind of rough at this time, especially in a county as large as ours that we can't find them other places of employment. I apologize for the scatteredness of it, but I really want to appeal to you to sit with this and think about what you're doing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Now, I'm emotional, so pardon me if I, if I cry. My name is Barbara Cheves. I was a member of the CJC for almost 12 years, two of which I was chair. Though I was no longer CJ, I'm no longer a CJC member, I kept the position of co-chair of the Community Engagement Task Force. And that's a task force that's made up of nonprofit community leaders, criminal justice system professionals. At that table, we have our Sheriff's Department, very well represented. We have our public defender and our state attorney. Most of the work of the MacArthur Safety and Justice Grant fell under our committee. It was an honor that Palm Beach County was chosen among 20 sites that received grants from MacArthur, and we've been awarded dollars for another year. Having to cease the work until MacArthur will not accept additional dollars is an embarrassment. We've worked with and learned from many, several partner organizations around the country and participated in national convenings. Among many things that the Safety and Justice Challenge has allowed hundreds of Palm Beach County residents to participate in structured dialogues with criminal justice professionals who were at the table at nine different dialogues around the country, around the county. These sessions, like those in the Dialogue to Change Initiative, allowed residents to share lived experiences, identify system gaps, and co-create solutions. The resources helped reduce duplicative efforts, strengthen partnerships, and lower our jail population. Before the Safety and Justice Challenge, missing a court date often meant jail time. Now, thanks to automated text reminders, thousands have stayed out of jail and their, and are in their communities. The system has reduced duplicative efforts across agencies and helped us focus resources where they're truly needed. Palm Beach County was selected for the Safety and Justice Challenge because of our strong partnerships with community and criminal justice systems. Now, we're the only site in the country that's canceling the contract, returning nearly $300,000 in funds that were helping us build safer, smarter communities. These resources were reducing jail numbers and improving collaboration. The loss of this partnership will be felt. I would be mortified to see this go away. I have 10 years invested in this, and I just, it's, it baffles me that we would stand here and consider returning funds that can be used to improve the safety and work with this Criminal Justice Commission. I really beg you to reconsider this and spend some time coming to our committees and seeing what we're doing before you summarily decide that we're going to give money back. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Jane Tierney. My husband and I own a business in Palm Beach County, and I am a member of two of the Criminal Justice Commission task forces and have been for the past five years. I am requesting that the commission table this motion and require complete detail and clarification of the scope and impact of the decision to terminate the Safety and Justice Challenge. There has been no transparency regarding the decision. The Criminal Justice Commission board members were not notified in advance, and they were not allowed to review or discuss the termination. Essentially, they were told it was a done deal. There should be transparency around this significant decision. The justification in the agenda item was, quote, "After careful consideration and reassessment of the SJC initiative, Palm Beach County has determined the initiative no longer aligns with our current priorities and strategic goals." Those are not defined. What are our current priorities and strategic goals? For the last 10 years, we have applied for and accepted MacArthur Foundation funding for this initiative. I am assuming our goals and strategic plan was in alignment for the last 10 years. Why is it no longer in alignment? When I saw the slide, all I saw is we have new members who have ideas for the criminal justice. We want to reevaluate. Fine, but why give back this money? Why turn down and terminate this grant? We have achieved so much with this. The MacArthur Foundation states the Safety and Justice Challenge is reimagining and rebuilding local criminal justice systems, reducing jail incarceration, and increasing equity for all. Is equity the unspoken reason the county is terminating the grants? Well, these grants have benefited everybody in the county. Every race, sex, age, residency, socioeconomic status, any person in this county has benefited or is eligible to benefit from this. The, the texting system is a front-end reduction in jail population. It is allowing people who might miss their court appearance to be reminded so that they do show up. These are not people who are trying to avoid court. This is like the texts we get from our doctors and dentists.
Thank you. All righty, we have no more cards. I see no lights on, Vice Mayor.
Has a motion been made yet?
A motion has not been made. Commissioner Powell.
I'll just say, I want to finish my comments with, Madam Mayor. The challenge that I still have is, even after Ms. Tierney spoke, not knowing or having concrete data or documentation for what the new priorities and strategic goals are, provides just a little bit of a problem for me. Also, Commissioner Weiss indicated, he talked about the text initiatives, can they continue? And that even if we talk about strategic goals and priorities, the answer is still kind of left, left it a little bit cloudy. So, that's something that we have to come back to. There was no concrete answer to that yet. So, those are things that still give me some consternation and pause with regard to this particular elimination of the grant. And the elimination or the returning of those $400,000. Thank you.
Commissioner Weiss.
Yeah, and this is in conjunction with what Commissioner Powell has said. I don't understand why we don't have, we can't have a text program, why that has to come back.
So, we can, if that the board, if it's the board's direction today, we can put that back in and find it within existing dollars.
I think-
Under the Public Safety Department, or there's some trust fund money that could potentially pay for that. But I was, I was saying earlier that I think it would be important for the board to have a, a full picture of some of the programs that we want to continue or discontinue moving forward.
So, are you saying that it hasn't been effective?
No, the text reminder, court text reminder system has been effective.
So, if it's, so if it's been effective, why wouldn't you be coming to us saying that we should continue to, to fund this?
So, the decision today was related to the grant. Yeah, sorry.
Okay. Yeah, I don't mean to interrupt you. But if, if it's regarding the grant and whatever those issues are and how that impacts, and as you've explained it to me, how it impacts the CJC, if it has to do with that grant, I understand that. But the programs that it helped to fund, if they're effective and we, and you all designed these programs, you came up with these ideas, you submitted them, you got the funding to do a pilot for them to prove, you know, as a proof of concept that they, they have been effective. I mean, if you want to, if, if there is an issue with how that grant impacts the operation of the CJC, that's, that's, that's an, that's an issue. But it's also important, the work that has been done, that you have proven, needs to continue. And that part of this conversation is missing. And that's, that's what's causing me concerns. And I, I think as a board, we want to keep people on the right, on the right path. If these tools are keeping them on the right path, and then, then we would want to keep those pieces of it. If you want to have a, be driven by all the other things that the grant requires or whatever it's causing, the issue, that, you know, that's understand, I don't know if it's understandable, but that's, that's created an issue. But I, I want to make sure that the funding for these, these services or these programs that we have that have been effective continue on.
Agreed.
And if the grant went away, at the end, and next year, the grant's going to go, would go away regardless, and I would expect you to come in front of us and say we should continue to fund this, this is proven to be effective.
Yeah, I agree. And there are some contracts that we would have to revise, and there are some things that we would just be paying a vendor with. So, there are certain things that we can quickly continue, and then there's certain things that we have to bring back to this board. And we will bring back to this board based on the, the direction today very quickly, within the next November meeting. Because those are contracts that would have to be approved by the board. But the court text reminder system is just a payment, it's my understanding, to a vendor. So, that can continue because we can replace that, we can just do a, a budget adjustment. But there's other contracts that were, as part of this agenda item, that would have to be terminated, that have SJC grant-related information in them.
And what, what about loss of personnel? Are we losing personnel because of this?
There are two positions that-
Have they been hired?
That, that are, they're both filled positions.
And then Vice Mayor Baxter.
Thank you, Mayor. So, I, I'm just looking for a little clarity on this entire motion. We have, A is receive and file for the grant. B and C, we are terminating parts of the grant. D, we're discontinuing the Urban Institute Justice Policy Center Case Processing and Mobile Probation Unit Studies. Is that, is that the texting?
No.
Okay. I'm going to need clarification. And then E, we are deleting, that's the two positions that Commissioner Weiss, I believe, was just referring to. So, can you just, what this motion exactly entails, if we pass this today, can you just clarify that real quick?
So, motion A, receive and file the GAN, which is basically just to close out the grant to reconcile the $741. The B is to actually terminate the two grants that are related to the Safety and Justice Challenge.
How much money is that?
So, that is the balances that I identified earlier, the 400 and something thousand and the 234,000.
So, over 600?
Well, as, that was as of August 1st. We put this together rather quickly, but those balances due to year-end closings of, of certain payments would be lower than that.
Okay.
And then C is to terminate three contracts. One is an MOU, or I'm sorry, the UpTrust Fieldwork Contract, which is a First Amendment to the MOU with the Clerk of Court. And then there's a First Amendment to the Public Defender's Interlocal Agreement, and then the Florida State University, and that's for an evaluation. And then D is to discontinue the Institute Justice Policy Center Case Processing and Mobile Probation Unit Studies. And then E is the two positions.
So, what is D, please?
Angelique, can you go into the D?
Sure. The Urban Institute through the MacArthur Foundation has selected two areas to do their own studies about Palm Beach County at no cost. The first one is for case processing efficiencies, and the second one as an implementation site. They're doing an evaluation of the success of the mobile probation unit.
And then D, those two positions, what, what do those two positions do?
One position is with public safety and the pre-trial services, and the other is a staff member of the Criminal Justice Commission as an analyst.
Okay. Thank you.
I guess the question to follow up with that is, what do those two, of these four items, which do these two jobs support?
So, I can speak to the pre-trial services counselor position. That supports our pre-trial services work. When somebody's put on pre-trial through the court, they will then come to our office and either be serving there for community service hours, and we monitor them and make sure that, you know, the information, or they might be under, you know, drug testing and counseling services, and we make sure that they're following the court orders. and counseling services, and we make sure that they're following the court orders.
Commissioner Woodward, do you have a follow-up? Vice Mayor Baxter?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Could you elaborate a little bit? The texting service was just letting them know when they have dates coming up that they need to appear for?
Yes.
So I do support Commissioner Weiss in wanting to continue that. As far as the position goes, the elimination of these positions, is it because the grant would no longer be?
Correct.
In place? How many open positions do we have at the county?
I don't have that total number, but...
Several hundred. I believe it's over 700. So there may be room somewhere then that we could take some of those open positions and use that funding for those that have not been filled to keep these people employed?
Yes, we would look to retaining those positions, those staff within other positions within the county, if there's a good fit, yes.
I think, I mean, that would be ideal, seeing as how we have, right. So I do, other than those several things, I do, there's so many things here that we're covering today. Are there any services specifically, Commissioner Weiss, that you would like to keep besides the texting?
So the mobile, the mobile probation van that goes out into the community, that so people don't have to...
The services of that have been picked up by the Department of Corrections, so DOC is handling that going forward.
But that, I know that had, I mean, it had shown that it had been effective in making sure people are doing what they're supposed to be doing instead of having to come in. I don't, of the other, I mean, I'm not aware of the rest of the programs. Those two I knew about, and I thought they had, I had heard they had been effective, and so...
Thank you. As long as, I never wanna have two, we already have hired two employees here, as long as we can figure out the positions. Administrator, would you care to chime in, please, on your thoughts on this?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. In regards to the positions, we would diligently look immediately to make sure that they had an opportunity to continue their employment with us here at the county. As far as Commissioner Weiss, the services highlighted, Chief Deputy Administrator, I think it was exactly accurate that one of the services has already been picked up and was going to continue even when the sun sets, and the texting is very important, and we would, with your direction, of course, find a way to continue that, especially through the funds we have available, which I believe we solidly do, and you could correct me, Steph, if I'm wrong on that statement.
No, we do. We were already aware that this grant was gonna end next year, so we've already made plans to make arrangements for those funds.
Well, I will then, thank you, Administrator. I will make the motion for A to, three Q2, for A to receive and file, B, terminate, C, terminate, D, discontinue, and E, delete what is listed here. And add direction for the texting service to continue and to work with the employees to find, to make sure we can fund those positions.
I have a motion from the mayor, the Vice Mayor, and a second from Commissioner Woodward. And I see no other lights on. Attorney Kaufman?
I just wanted to clarify a little bit. Normally, what would happen is the employees would be given an opportunity to apply for a job in another department versus continuing them in the current department, because the grant's going away, so their duties in that department may be going away.
Excuse me, Madam Attorney, we're not switching positions, I think we're just funding them differently?
That's the question that I'm asking you, because if they don't need those positions in that department, they may need the positions in another department.
And that's what we'd like to leave the Administrator to work out those details.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Okay, so I had a motion, a second, I see no other lights on. All in favor? Aye. All opposed?
Aye.
See, the motion carries 5-2. Thank you very much, all. So it is 12:44. We were gonna take a break at 12:30. We will take a break now. I invite the board to go downstairs and take a picture with the bus for Lighthouse for the Blind, and then we will resume at 2 o'clock for matters by the public, and after that, we'll finish the rest of the board meeting. Thank you.
Take a break first.